Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. If you could please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Biskoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First thing we need to do with them is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I would like to move adoption of the agenda with one modification, that we move item number seven, the public hearing for real estate equities housing revenue bonds, to after item number 12, where we consider the site plan for that item, that puts those two together.
Okay. Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer, to approve the agenda, moving item seven down to below item 12. So make that like 12A or something there. Is that what you're looking for?
After 13?
I missed that.
13 is... Oh, after 13. Okay.
After 13. Okay. That's good. We'll call that 13A then.
13A.
Okay. So that was a motion and a second, right? All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Make those notes on here, or I will still mess it up. All right. First on our agenda this evening is the introduction of the graduating police reserves. Who's taking over over there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Justin Hoborka, Coon Rapids Police Officer, and I'm also a police reserve advisor, along with Officer Bill Hamas to my right. I'd like to take just a few minutes to recognize these seven brand-new police reserve officers as they have just graduated the police reserve academy. The Coon Rapids Police Reserve Unit consists of well-trained and dedicated volunteers who are focused on serving the needs of the community and have a longstanding tradition of service. Reserve officers are unpaid volunteers who work to supplement the efforts of the department to maintain our collective safety and security. Coon Rapids Police Reserve Officers assist our police department, as well as neighboring law enforcement agencies, by providing extra staffing and performing many non-enforcement functions. Our police reserve unit also provides assistance to the department's patrol division by providing extra patrol to problem areas, assisting officers on vehicle tow, handling a variety of non-emergency calls for service, and providing prisoner transports to jail. While their roles may be many, their primary goal is to assist the Coon Rapids Police Department in carrying out the mission of providing public safety and public service. This 2019 Police Reserve Academy started on March 24th, and since then, these recruits have volunteered to give up their Sunday mornings and afternoons to training provided by our police officers. These recruits successfully completed a total of 36 hours of training in several topics. The provided training will give these volunteers a foundation of knowledge as they begin their new roles. To the recruits to my left, tonight you are officially graduating from our reserve academy program. We are very happy to have each of you become members of our department. Take pride in yourself and your department. Make sure you project a positive and professional image. This remains a very noble and courageous profession. I believe law enforcement is exciting, interesting, challenging, worthwhile, and rewarding. I hope that you too will have a similar experience. Let me conclude by wishing all of the graduates a safe, enjoyable, and satisfying experience as a Coon Rapids Police Reserve Officer. I want to thank you for taking the time not only to attend and participate in the training, but also for your future volunteerism, which will no doubt benefit our agency and the public for which we serve. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm proud to introduce you to the 2019 Police Reserve Academy graduates. Kami Christiansen. Jessica Hughes. Don Cook. Jessica Latran. Matt Ryder. Kenny Schimmel. And Sarah Smith. Thank you.
Actually, I'll just take one minute, because it's really important to for you, I want all of you to meet the city councilmembers. My name is Fred Lysom, Police Chief. And if you all didn't know, I started my career here as a reserve officer back in 1992 or '94. But I want to make sure that you shake the hands of all the councilmembers, so if you want to just come down here and just...
(inaudible).
Sure.
This becomes important when we come to the barricades during the parade.
(laughter)
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right.
That was fun. We love the sound of children. It's just fine. Don't worry about it. I love kids. All right. So the next thing on our agenda this evening is we have special guest Matt Stemwaddle. Oh.
Just sent us something out there.
Even more special than that, we have Sarah Krieger here from Alina for Mercy Hospital, and she is going to tell us about the new 340B program, and I think...
Yeah. So let me just give you a background. I know, it's very exciting.
Wow.
Nobody wants to listen to this. I'm cool with that. Really.
Have you heard this presentation before?
We've got better things to do. I'm thinking a glass of wine, or whatever. You guys should celebrate.
Don't take it personal.
No, no. Not at all. I know where I'd be. All right. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for having me. I'm gonna just do a brief overview. We actually, Mercy Hospital actually qualifies now for a federal program called the 340B Program, which gives us really a discount on drugs, medications, pharmaceutical supplies to help us with covering the costs that we provide for people who don't have insurance or underinsured. And this is a federally funded program that you'll see in a minute. Means a lot to Mercy Hospital, helps support our programs and services that are not covered by healthcare costs or revenue streams for us. Interestingly, the federal government requires that the city have a contract with us to enter into this program. And I think it essentially is an opportunity for the federal government to know that we are fulfilling our obligation as a nonprofit with the city of Coon Rapids and in our local government. So I'm just gonna give you a brief overview. Hopefully, we'll answer questions you have about what we're doing in the community, the care that we support, the support we provide again to those who are uninsured or underinsured, and that you will be comfortable approving the signature of the contract that we'll need to have to get this funding. So thank you for entertaining me for a few minutes. I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna take long, but want to give you a quick overview so you are satisfied with what we're doing for the community. This is just a list of, in case you don't know about Alina Health, we are part of a large organization. We have 12 hospitals, including in Minneapolis, Abbott Northwestern, St. Paul United Hospital, several small community hospitals. Mercy Hospital is part of that. We have many primary care clinics, rehabilitation, retail pharmacy, home care, really the full breadth of services and continuum. And I have to say, I'm proud of the fact that Alina Health is the only system that provides the full continuum of services to the North Metro area, with our strong primary care base, outpatient services, and emergency room, inpatient care, tertiary care. No one else provides that to the North Metro area, and we're proud to do that, and it's an honor to serve these communities. You may remember, in 2017, we actually merged our Unity Hospital campus and our Mercy Hospital campuses, so we are now a one, a two-campus hospital. So Mercy Hospital does include our Unity campus. That's been going very well, and it has allowed us to make significant investments in our facilities, as well as our programs. This is the, really, the population we serve, the geographic reach is quite far north and west. We serve a population of more than a half a million people with care that we know people come to Mercy, either of our campuses, for care from far-reaching Cambridge, Mora, Buffalo. What you see here in the purple and the yellow areas where about 80% of our patients come from, and then the green area is the outreach for mostly our tertiary care, where they may enter a small hospital that doesn't offer some of the higher-end services, heart care, mental health, neuroservices, and they will come to Mercy from quite a distance to get that specialty care, and then they don't have to go into downtown Minneapolis or St. Paul. About 40%, 46% of people that have a hospital admission from our service area get that care at Mercy, one of our locations. So we're really proud to serve the community. This is just a snapshot of 2018, and the number of patients we served, almost 35,000 inpatient admissions on our campuses, 20,000 surgeries, 111,000 emergency department visits. That's huge, probably in the top 20 in the country. So our communities really depend on our emergency care. And as you probably know, the Mercy campus is a Level 2 trauma center. We're one of two in the Twin Cities area, so we handle quite a bit. Lots of babies born, that's the fun part of our job. We employ a large workforce, a lot of physicians. We're very proud of our volunteers. It was fun to see your reserve officers. We depend on volunteers, too. This is a strong volunteer community. The services we provide are very broad. We often tell our staff, we probably would be easier to tell you what we don't do. We don't do burns, and we don't do high-end pediatrics. Other than that, you can get 98% probably of what the community needs between our two campuses. We're proud of not only what we do, but how well we do it. This year, U.S. News &amp; World Report came out with their rankings. Mercy Hospital was ranked number two in the Twin Cities around many quality and service metrics, only behind Abbott Northwestern. So we're very proud of that. People say, you know, Mercy Hospital, number two? You know what happened to, you know, all the other big hospitals in the Twin Cities? So our team is really focused on quality and care. We have several other awards that we receive and that we're proud of. I think it's interesting, we've been named by three independent organizations as a top 100 hospital in the country. There's 4,000 hospitals in the country. So Mercy's in the top 100, named by many sources. The awards are, I'm proud, I'm a little competitive, so this is wonderful, but it's interesting. This is, this is affirmative of what we do. It's not why we do what we do. We do what we do, and we do it well because of the people who are counting on us, and the people who come into our hospital counting on us to provide excellent care. We're motivated by that, and the awards just are kind of frosting on the cake on that front. This is a community recognition example. This was in the Union Herald, a story from a gentleman who came to us. Can have you see this story without violating HIPAA, because he actually put it in the paper. So he wanted to talk about though, really, how blessed he was to live in this community, and what it meant to him to have a hospital like Mercy. So I won't read you the article, but we talked about his care on the third floor of the Mercy campus, and the wonderful nurses, and just how proud it made him and how thankful he was. So we hear that often from people, and we realize we need to be there for them in often their greatest time of need, and we take that really very seriously. So Alina has made a significant investment in our two campuses. I think you're probably familiar, if you've not seen the cranes up on the, especially the Mercy campus, you've seen buildings going up. I've been here seven years this month. The campus is completely different than when I came. I think about the mother-baby center, the specialty center across the street. Alina made an investment of $112 million between our two campuses, mostly on the Mercy campus, as the largest single investment Alina's made in two decades, and it was for this community, and really demonstrated its commitment. You can see here a list of the projects, that everything from ICU to ED renovation, to operating rooms, to kitchen and a parking ramp. And it's just made a huge difference. Not only in the amount of patients we can now keep in the community because we have capacity, because we have beds, we were really having to transfer out a significant number of people out of the community because we were completely full. And this reconfiguration expansion has allowed us to really not have to transfer patients out, and that means a lot when they've already traveled far, when their loved ones live nearby, to not have to be transferred because we don't have beds for them. But we've also been able to expand programs. We've advanced stroke care with interventional stroke care now, which is just amazing outcomes with what we can do for patients who have a stroke. Advanced mother-baby care with Children's Hospital and Clinics, and really advanced our mental health and addiction services for our community where we really do need to respond to the crisis. So the 340B Drug Savings Program is a federal government program administered by Health Resources and Services Administration. It entitles hospitals to access discounted drug prices to stretch scarce resources. We qualify as what they call a disproportionate share hospital, which means we serve a significantly disproportionate number of low-income community members and patients. So they recognize that we have taken a role in supporting those who are less fortunate. We don't turn anyone away from our hospital. We work with them. But the savings from the discounts of the 340 program really help us maintain and expand care for all patients. This will mean about $3.5 to $4 million per year for Mercy Hospital. That's a, is substantial to us. You can see here a chart of the uncompensated care that we have provided in the community for the last two years, 2017, between charity care and uninsured discounts. Just over 20 million, that grew by about 10% in 2018, is up to, was up to almost 23 million in uncompensated care that we tracked on the Mercy books. So this is, as I said, a contract that's required between the city of Coon Rapids and Mercy Hospital. It basically says that Mercy will agree to continue our historical commitment to the provision of healthcare to the indigent, underinsured, uninsured residents of Coon Rapids and the surrounding communities. It will provide many of the healthcare services and programs that are needed to meet the healthcare needs, but oftentimes don't generate revenue, or don't generate enough revenue to cover the costs. So our emergency rooms, educational programs that we do, we have great partnerships with the community. We participate in emergency preparedness with the county and the local communities and with the state. As I said, free care for patients who may not be eligible for Medicare or Medicaid. Underinsured patients with annual household incomes below $125,000 are eligible to receive discounts, so we do look at what their income and payment potential is for them. And so we're gonna continue to provide those services and ensure that patients receive necessary care as required by law, and it's our emergency departments and otherwise throughout the hospital. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. Hopefully, that's given you a base understanding of what we're asking for and why, and why we believe it would be appropriate for the city to enter into this contract with us to help our community. Thank you, Mayor. Yes?
Councilmember Demmer.
I had a question on the last bullet there, the uninsured patients with an annual income below $125,000, or patients with health insurance but whose insurance does not cover a particular item. Below $125,000 is an awful lot of people.
Yeah.
How would somebody know? So this is more of a question for people watching on TV, but if someone goes to Mercy and they believe they fit into that category, when and where do they let someone know?
That's a great question. So we have financial representatives whose jobs it is to walk people through what their options are, if they don't have insurance, and if they have a scheduled procedure, and we would do that with them ahead of time to see if they might qualify for Medicaid, for Minnesota Care, for instance. So they're very knowledgeable on all of the options that are available, and also our charity care program. They would help them through that process and put in the appropriate information to make sure that they qualify for that, and we make sure we satisfy anything we can do to help them get insured first, and if not, then offer them the charity care options. Discount rate.
And then when it says if you have health insurance, but insurance does not cover a particular item, do you have anything that helps people with, say, a really high deductible plan, where the whole procedure is gonna be deductible?
Yeah.
Just kind of trying to figure out, so people who are watching on TV, when they go to Mercy, know what to ask?
Again, there's a financial representative. If they think they're gonna have any issues, we have staff who specifically do this and sort through it, and you can imagine there's hundreds of different health plans with different things that are covered or not covered, so we have a team of people that, when they're being scheduled, when they check in, they actually meet with a patient representative and, from registration, and they will help walk them through at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Sarah, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I just think it's fabulous that we have you in our community.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
With that, I would make a motion to approve the MOU with Mercy Hospital.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson, to approve the memorandum of understanding with Mercy Hospital. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're a great partner for us, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you for your partnership. It means more than you know. We feel it on many fronts, so thank you very much.
We feel...
Partnership, we actually use the place, too.
Yeah.
Yep. We feel very fortunate to have you in the community. My neighbor went down with, let's just say a friend of mine, went down with a full blockage, and he was, he was going, "That's a really top-ranked heart place," after they brought him back from being dead. You know? It's like, yes, it is. That's where you wanna be.
Yeah. Our heart center has actually been named a top 50 in the country, many times. So it's, it's a great team. I'm just really proud to work with this team, and it's an honor to serve people. Thank you. I'm sorry if you need hospital care, but...
Thanks again.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the May 21st meeting. So moved? Taken. Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any discussion? Corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those are approved. We have one item on our consent agenda this evening, and that's to consider adopting Resolution 19-53, accepting the Community Strength Foundation donation in the amount of $4,000. Community Strength Foundation has graciously donated $4,000 to offset costs for the 2019 Summer Concert Series. The donation will offset costs for the following performers: Minnesota Blue, Backyard Band, Kenny and Rick, Vinnie Rose, and the Revolution Five. We're looking to adopt Resolution formally accepting this donation, and of course, the city is grateful to the Community Strength Foundation for their generosity, so we'll be looking to adopt Resolution 19-53, accepting the donation of $4,000 from the Community Strength Foundation for use in the 2019 Concert Series.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Say that exactly thing again, or can I just say so moved again?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler, to adopt the consent agenda.
Oh, right. Someday, somebody's gonna have to explain to me why we have a consent agenda with only one item.
But it won't be tonight.
Supposed to just have a separate agenda.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. We are on to item five, to consider 2019 Prince One Miscellaneous Special Assessment Levy Hearing. So we're looking at holding an assessment hearing to collect written appeals. Mr. Stemwaddle, or somebody, do we have anything that's come in? Let's see here. Do we have anybody? Any notes tonight?
Trevor and I are both here.
Okay.
To address any issues that there are.
Okay. So the amount to be assessed for the 2019 Prince One Miscellaneous Assessments is $130,688.88 as of May 28th. The amount reflects payments and adjustments that have been made since May 21st, when the assessment hearing date was set. An updated amount will be distributed on June 4th, and the affected resolutions will be completed at that time. Do we have a different amount, then?
Yes. Mayor, we have a one-year total of $124,875.88, which is 61 parcels. A three-year toll of $49,485.75, 20 parcels. A five-year toll of $31,652.75, which are four parcels, and an appeals toll of $7,009,835, which are six parcels.
Okay. So, and you've got those written appeals in, and we don't have any, so let's see. So hold an assessment hearing to collect written appeals. So if there's no other questions, I should do that, right? All right. So we will open the assessment hearing to collect any written appeals. Does anybody have a written appeal to turn in for the assessment hearing? Any written appeals for the assessment hearing? All right. Well, then we will close the assessment hearing to collect written appeals, and we're looking at three different resolutions there. Can all of us be all together then? All right.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So, adopt Resolution 19-54, adopting the 2019 Sub One Miscellaneous Special Assessments, unopposed, one year. Do you want the dollar mark again? Okay. And to adopt Resolution 19-55, adopting the 2019 Sub One Miscellaneous Special Assessments, unopposed, for three-year. And adopt Resolution 19-56, adopting the 2019 Sub One Miscellaneous Special Assessments, unopposed, five-year. And do we also need to do the miscellaneous one? There's only three resolutions, but there are four, so it's okay. I'm good.
That's important. Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. So we're up to item six, which is to hold a public hearing and consider Resolution 19-59, Common Bond Communities Housing Revenue Bonds. Grant, you wanna hit the highlights on this, or do you want me to just read the discussion you got here?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to provide a summary. So as council is aware, June of last year, you adopted a resolution granting preliminary approval for Conduit Housing Revenue Bond Financing for the Galway Place Town Homes, which are located here in Coon Rapids. Common Bond also owns another property in St. Paul called Community Plaza. This mechanism actually allows, Conduit financing allows entities to actually issue debt in other communities if you have the proper arrangements in place, so we will need to, we will need to do that with the city of St. Paul. As it relates to this particular request, Common Bond owns the Galway Place Town Homes. They purchased those, that property in 2017. It consists of 36 units of Section 8 affordable housing located at 11184 Hanson Boulevard. That building was constructed in 1981, and it consists of six different townhome buildings. Common Bond is requesting that the city authorize the issuance of these housing revenue bonds for both projects in an amount not to exceed $11 million. Most of the work will be used for building exterior renovation-type things, in addition to some site work and interior renovations. So the process is to, last year was adopting the preliminary resolution, which then authorized a public hearing, although it wasn't date-specific, so we've advertised for that this evening. So the action would be to conduct the public hearing tonight, close the public hearing, and then adopt the attached resolution, which approves the housing program, then authorizes the issuance of that debt. I should note that the intent is to actually park these bonds, so this would be an interim financing, and then they would have a permanent financing this fall. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. and then adopt the attached resolution, which approves the housing program, then authorizes the issuance of that debt. I should note that the intent is to actually park these bonds. So this would be an interim financing and then they would have a permanent financing this fall. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I believe there is a representative from Common Bond here if there are any questions about the project itself.
Does anybody have any questions for her? Grant, do we know how much of the 11 million is going to be for these 36 units?
I asked that question this afternoon and the estimate, we think, is around 5.2 million. So.
Almost half.
Yeah. I think that's accurate unless.
Okay. You want to come up and tell us who you are and introduce yourself?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Diana Deasy, a project manager with Common Bond Communities, and approximately 55% to 60% of the bonds will be allocated to Galway.
Oh, okay. I mean, that's significant. That's like $150,000 a unit or something. That's nice.
Yeah, correct. And as staff stated, it's primarily for, the property hasn't seen a substantial rehab since 1981. So through the, when we previously were in front of the council, the city supported the HRA CDBG funding, which went to improve site work and roofing. And then this renovation will include interiors, kitchens, baths, flooring, as well as create a community, or excuse me, a property management area. So we're really excited to be able to further serve the residents at the community.
Wow, nice. All right. Anybody have any questions? You didn't have any before. Has she peaked any?
Shoot, did I say too much? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so I should, all right, so if nobody has any questions, I will open the public hearing then on the Common Bond Communities Housing Revenue Bonds. Does anybody here to address counsel for the public hearing for the Common Bond Communities Housing Revenue Bonds? All right. Do I have to call that like three times, or is that good enough now? All right. Common Bond Communities Housing Revenue Bonds, public hearing closing. All right. Counsel?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
I move to adopt Resolution 19-59, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of the multi-family housing revenue obligations to the Galway Place Community Plaza projects, per Minnesota Statute, Chapter 462(c), and approving the forms and authorizing the execution and delivery of the obligations and related documents.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any discussions?
A little nod over there.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And thank you for coming out. We moved seven down to follow 13, so we are on item eight, Consider Award of Contract for Coon Rapids Boulevard Improvements, City Project 18-13. Did we want to just discuss that a little bit, or we move it on? Mr. Hemmer? Did he look at you?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we received one bid. It's a kind of rough construction season out there. Come in about 35% above the engineer's estimate. About 60% of the project is to be funded by Inoka County via joint powers agreement. They've notified us that they can't afford to do that this year. We think it's in our best interest to throw out the bid and we can look at potentially packaging it with something else later, but we still want to move forward with that and we'll look at doing that later this summer and maybe a 2020 construction.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Demmer?
Your Honor, I move to reject the bids and not award a contract for Project 18-13 at this time.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in, did you have your hand up?
No, it's just one of those, what are you going to do?
Oh, yeah.
Can't afford it.
All right. All right, then all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. So now we are on to item nine, Consider Adoption of Ordinances 2221, 2222, and 2223, related to multi-unit recycling collection and adopt minimum recycling standards policy. This was introduced at the last council meeting and everything here is primarily dealing with multi-family units and 47 of those 58 already meet the pickup recycling changes. I don't know, is there anything you want to highlight? Anything you want to pick? Yeah, I'm struggling here, Dave. You can see that.
Obviously, Mr. Sinclair is also here tonight to answer any specific questions. This has been discussed. It's to kind of create a standard for our multi-unit. We believe that all the affected properties have been given notice and had a chance to participate in that discussion. I think we're also clarifying some discrepancies between two different sections of our code to make sure that we're able to consistently apply that. So at this point, I think we're hoping just to enact these ordinances. As you know, they will not have an effective date until September 1st to again give properties an opportunity to come into compliance.
October.
Oh, I apologize. Is that what our, that's what the memo says, but I don't think that's what the ordinance says. We better clarify that because the ordinance is going to trump that. I think it says it's effective, it is effective September 1st. I think the intent of it is we probably wouldn't take any, obviously, an enforcement action on that particular date. I think it's the intent of staff to start enforcement on October 1st because obviously the main goal is to give these tenants or these buildings an opportunity to come into compliance and come into compliance voluntarily.
Okay, so for clarification, the ordinance will go into effect September 1st, but the plan is to not enforce it until after October 1st to give them time to come into compliance. Okay.
Mr. Ray?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinances 2221, 2222, and 2223, amending city codes 8-214-7, 8-215-2, 12-914-5, relating to multi-unit recycling collection and adopt minimum recycling standards policy.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Chris Kovyak?
I'll just say that I like the process that this went through. We let all owners have a lot of input on this and everyone's in agreement on this. Recycling staff did a nice job on this and that this is a pretty low bar, really, but it's a step in the right direction. So fully supportive of this.
And a big piece of this is education. It's getting folks to know how to, you know, how to recycle. And I actually went in and I was trying to figure out a label because everybody thinks different things are recyclable. It's like, no, no, I'm always picking, no, those aren't it and these are and, you know, so some, even homeowner, it'd be nice to have a label for people, for homeowners can stick on their garbage, but that's separate. That's, this is multi-family. Okay. Any other, any discussion? Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that Ms. Sinclair and her staff have done a good job working with the multi-unit buildings and, you know, any of them that need signs or stickers or information, all of that is available through the city, you know, to be able to help them and help the residents now. So I appreciate all of the work that they do.
True. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, what?
Is this a situation where we have input, or is this, those were public hearings?
No. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And this motion carries. No, I'm sorry, we had, we've had workshops leading up to this and we've had opportunities, so we're taking action tonight. I'm sorry. Thank you, though. Item 10, Consider Adoption of Ordinance 2224, Adding Chapter 2-1200, Reasonable Accommodation. Mr. Brody, you want to hit this one?
Yes. Your Honor, councilmembers, again, this is, we're at adoption tonight. We did introduce this ordinance at the last council meeting. This relates to reasonable accommodations that are related to the Fair Housing Act. What this particular ordinance is intended to do is provide for a process in which to do that. I anticipate that we will get a specific request as it relates to the number of residents or number of persons that we allow in a housing unit, but at this point tonight, we're just trying to put the process together for that. Couple of things I did want to point out that I didn't address in my memorandum. Number one, I think I promised you guys, or maybe it was Grant, who promised you a copy of our reasonable accommodations application. We were finalizing that and we still haven't quite got the final approval of that. I promise I'll send it out to you in the next couple of days so you guys can see that ahead of time. The ordinance will become in effect 10 days, 10 days or 15 days after publication. 15 days, so we'll get that out to you in the next couple of days. So I do apologize. The other piece I wanted to address, and I assume Councilmember Johnson may bring it up, is that we did discuss potentially changing some language to add to sort of another factor and additional factor regarding an articulable concern to public safety, something along that lines. I did have a chance to review that. Councilmember Johnson, I did just talk about that as well. And I also assaulted with a couple of other attorneys regarding that. My recommendation today, and that's why it's still indicated that, or the ordinance is still the same as when we introduced it, is to keep that language out. These standards came from case law. They're fairly set. To create a different standard might say that we're imposing a higher standard or a different standard. It may not, even if it didn't factor into our decision, it may create a different standard. And so the advice that I received and, you know, based on my own research, would confirm that I would just suggest that we, or suggest that this council adopt the ordinance as written. Other than that, I don't have anything further to add. Certainly open to questions on this particular ordinance.
Questions for Mr. Brody? Clarifications?
Your Honor.
It's Reverend Johnson.
Thank you. So the issue that I have with the current draft, and then I want to discuss it for just a brief moment, is I think it's reasonably foreseeable that at some point in time in the future, we may have to consider some request for reasonable accommodation that impacts a concern about public safety. Not just a general concern about public safety, but a specific articulable concern about public safety. And you can envision things like too many occupants in a building. You could envision things like fire code issues. You could envision other things that bear upon public safety. This is where it's difficult to be both, frankly, a lawyer who's practiced law for over 20 years and a city council member, because we have lawyers and we rely upon their advice. Generally, when I'm advising a client, if I can reasonably foresee something that I want to make sure that we look at it down the road and that we factor it into our analysis, I want to articulate that in the factors that we're going to consider as opposed to default back to a catch-all clause that says, for all intents and purposes, or any other relevant thing that we need to consider. But I did have an opportunity to discuss it with Mr. Brody and one of the things that we discussed is whether the specific factors that are listed in there are based on case law and other guidances. So in other words, courts have reviewed the matters and then said, these are legitimate things for you to consider in whether there's an appropriate accommodation that's being made. So I'm going to say that I might have a little bit of a different approach to this, but I'm not going to supplant my process for that of the city attorney. So I'm comfortable that he's thought about the issue, that he's explored the issue with other people, and he's given us his advice now to adopt the ordinance as written and I'm willing to accept that. So I just wanted to make that clear. I appreciate the extra inquiry from Mr. Brody and to other people and other authorities. I would like to maybe in the policy that we have, where we are informing our own staff in the future about how to go through this process, to be clear about it, because if we don't put it in here, the one thing that I want to avoid is staff in the future saying, well, these are the only factors that we're going to consider and not necessarily think broader than that, that there is a possible public safety issue if there is an articulable one. I do not think it would be appropriate to include just public safety alone or a general public safety concern alone. It's got to be a real legitimate public safety concern for us to deny an application for a reasonable accommodation. But that's the way I view it and I appreciate the extra inquiry by the city attorney.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Demmer?
So just understanding then, so number seven says, any other fact that may have a bearing on the request as determined by the city, that would cover the situation that we're discussing and having something in a policy would not be as legally binding, but would help direct. Because the one thing I always worry about is we pass something with one thing in mind and then three councils down the road, people are looking back and they don't actually know what we meant. So I just want to make sure.
I believe, I would say yes, that's what number seven would be for. I think there may be another, you know, a couple of other factors too that may be applicable to fire codes, things like that. In my consultation, I did speak with the attorney who's representing the cities that are involved in the sober housing litigation now. So like I said, she seemed to be a reliable source. So I'm hoping that, I just want to put us in the best position to be able to make these decisions that when we do make them, that hopefully they're legally sound and that we at least have a process that's accurate. So I appreciate.
So now it's in the minutes, so.
And just for clarification, that seven-factor list, it's a non-exclusive list. So number seven is intended for the purpose of catching other factors that might bear upon.
Sure.
Whether it's legal or appropriate to grant a reasonable accommodation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we introduced this at the May 21st meeting, so anybody wanted to take some action on it tonight? Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that the council adopt ordinance 2224, adding Chapter 2-1200, Reasonable Accommodation, which provides a process for requesting a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item 11, Plan Case, Consider Plan Case 19-10, Consider Request for Dimensional Flexibility, 3050, Coon Rapids Boulevard, Alina Health. Mr. Harlecker?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Let me pull up our, point here, excuse me. This item is at the request of Alina Health and Mercy Hospital. What they are proposing or requesting is dimensional flexibility for impervious surface coverage, parking stall length, and parking setback. This is part of a project that the hospital has been working on for several years now. They've been working with the watershed district and the city engineering department on upgrading their stormwater management plan for the Mercy Hospital site. And this is really the final phase of that process. What they are proposing to do is in this area here is install an underground stormwater management system. Right now, there's some parking there and a small stormwater pond. Once that underground system is installed, they would like to pave over the top of it to increase the number of parking stalls for the hospital. That paving is what's triggering the need for dimensional flexibility. The impervious coverage is required, the flexibility for impervious coverage is required because they will be exceeding the 80% maximum allowed with the new parking that'll be installed. Currently, there is 81.5% impervious coverage, so they currently exceed the requirement. The proposed project will increase that up to 85% impervious coverage. Dimensional flexibility can be approved if the modification will result in better integration of uses, additional public amenities. integration of uses, additional public amenities. And in this case here, staff looked at this and, and believe that by allowing them to increase the impervious coverage, they will better integrate the proposed stormwater management plan with functions of the hospital, in that they will essentially get a dual purpose of this area, stormwater management as well as needed additional parking for the hospital. The second item that they're requesting flexibility on is parking stall dimensions. City code requires parking stalls at 20 feet deep, nine feet wide. What the hospital is proposing is parking stalls that are nine feet wide and 18 feet deep. Those dimensions will match the existing parking in this parking area here. Requiring the, the hospital to install 20-foot-deep parking stalls would result in dangerous modifications in the drive aisle. The drive aisle will actually be two feet less than what it is currently now, create a dangerous driving situation. So in looking at the requirements or the criteria for flexibility with respect to parking stalls, granting of flexibility will result in better integration of the new parking stalls with a layout of the existing parking lot. And the final request, excuse me, for flexibility is along 115th Street, which is along the south here. What they are proposing to do is continue the existing curb line along 115th at, at this location here. In order to do that, they need flexibility from parking setback. Parking setback is required to be 20 feet from the property line. In this case, the property line is actually out in the middle of 115th. But what the city does have through here is a easement that allows for the existing 115th, which is a gravel street, to be located where it is. What they are proposing to do is have the, the parking stall encroach into that parking easement by five feet. City engineering department has reviewed this aspect of the plan, and they don't believe that the parking will interfere with any future improvements to 115th here. They felt that there was enough area here to accommodate any future improvements of 115th. At the planning commission meeting held on May 16th, several residents spoke at the public hearing. Their main concern was the removal of the, the stormwater pond. Another resident expressed concerns about possible assessments as a result of this project. This is a privately funded project through the hospital. Couple of residents questioned the, the need for additional parking. Representatives from the hospital spoke to that, and they said the, the main crunch comes in shift change in the afternoon, and this will help to alleviate that as well as long-term parking demands. With that, planning commission recommended unanimously approval of dimensional flexibility for impervious surface, parking stall length, and parking setback with the findings contained in the staff report.
Mr. Harlicker, is there a clarification? These are really all just employee parking, right?
Um, yes, it is.
I mean, the public parking is really the parking ramp out front and...
Correct.
Yeah, and this is essentially just employee parking.
Yep.
Okay. And there's, and there's already some compact-only parking places in that parking lot, so I assume the employees can kind of adjust quickly to where they fit and where they don't fit, and...
Yep.
Okay.
There are existing parking stalls in this area here, just to the east of the pond, so if you look on the new site plan, that would be this area here is currently parking.
Sure. Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Couple of questions. When, when we talk about them removing the pond, the stormwater pond, and then basically putting an underground system in there, what are we talking about? What's going in underneath?
A series of, I believe there are perforated pipes. If, like the city engineer can explain it probably later than I can.
Sure. Thank you.
Long as he's here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Call some members. To answer your question, the pipes are going to be 84-inch, so seven-foot diameter perforated metal pipes.
Like big drain towel.
Big drain towel is a good way to think of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so the, the function of that stormwater basin that's there now will be greatly expanded. It's going to be about 10 times the size, and it's going to be placed underground, essentially.
The watershed district has approved?
The watershed district hasn't approved this particular plan. They approved a earlier version of it when we were through both the city here and with the watershed with the previous project at Mercy. We kind of proposed a placeholder plan that served the same function but wasn't in the same location as what we're proposing tonight. So we will be going back to the watershed district with this layout, but we have met with them preliminarily, and they've indicated that as long as we are meeting the same performance standards that we were with the previous plan that we were performing with, they would likely be accepting of the project.
Who does the engineering work for those performance standards? Does the watershed district do it, or do you all do it?
The, the watershed sets the performance standards that the, the systems require to meet, in conjunction with also MPCA requirements that are, that have some, some requirements on infiltration, and as, and the city has some requirements on, on runoff and volume control. So, it's a, it's a combination of, of three different entities really that control the, the design of the project, and so then we design the project to meet the standards of the three.
And then the only other question that I had that was at all related to this, and I think I heard you say it, Mr. Harlicker, the size of the parking stalls is essentially matching the size of parking stalls throughout the rest of the, the parking lot. Is that right?
Correct.
And, am I right in remembering, because I've been in and out of that parking lot probably hundreds of times over my lifetime, that this, even though this is generally used by the employees, this is also accessible as overflow public parking as, as well, right?
There's no signage that restricts public from parking back there for the, for the hospital use, no.
Okay.
It is kind of a, a long hike, though, if you're, that's not going to be your first choice.
Yeah, part of what I was going to say is, it's really shafting the people on the second shift, because they're going to have to walk a country mile to get to the hospital, but... Get their steps in. But, either get their steps in, thank you. Spoken like a true millennial. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineer, Lisa? Councilor Biskovia?
I have a question for the engineer. Why, what is necessary to have the variance into the setback on the street? Is it just because you want to get an extra setup of parking spaces in there, or does it have to do with the stormwater mitigation?
It does extend that existing parking drive, or the existing southern curb line to the west. So it really kind of completes the, the curb line as it runs to the west, so it...
It makes it a rectangle.
It does make it a rectangle. To your question about, does it, does it have ties to the, to the stormwater system, there are some technical reasons why we prefer to have the stormwater system where we, where we do have it. If we jump further to the north, we're going to, we're going to get further north of some existing catch basins, and we'll have to chase the, the grade of the parking lot quite a, for, quite a ways further north than what, what we would have to if we keep it where it's at. So it does get into some technical reasons for why we have it placed there, the storm system itself, but from a parking perspective, it really just keeps that, that southern curb line in line with the existing.
I would also say it's, it's one of the few and last dirt roads in Coon Rapids, so...
Reverend Johnson?
So, I just want to clarify, so, the stormwater pond that is there, the, kind of the rate that it would go into the groundwater will be the same as what's being with that pipe?
The infiltration.
Yeah, the stormwater, thank you. The stormwater pond that is there probably functions slightly differently, so it serves to, to capture some stormwater and let sediments and, and pollutants filter out into the, into sediment that's there, and then as it overfills, that water runs off into the existing storm system. It's not likely, I, I, I don't know, I don't know the design parameters of when it was designed, but it likely wasn't designed as an infiltration pond.
Okay.
Which is the, the, the goals of modern stormwater rules and regulations, is to get that water back into the ground where it falls as opposed to getting it piped off-site.
Candidly, this is an improvement, because you're going to lose a lot less to evaporation.
Okay, because the, the question that I would have is, in those neighborhoods, there are some clay plates, and with that, the water will hit them and run into, you know, and we've had to add additional drain tile and things like that in those neighborhoods, so we don't have that water running into homes. And so I just want to make sure that our engineering team and that that's considered from the watershed perspective of how much, if I'm putting more directly into that lower groundwater, that can get saturated at this point in those neighborhoods today.
Sure. And that, that is a good question, and, and for that reason, we do a number of soil borings, so we've got three soil borings in the area that we've gotten today, with more scheduled, another four more scheduled in the near future, just to look at what those soil stratum's are. And then further, we're going to go ahead during construction and perform 14 infiltration tests to show that the water is actually infiltrating in these locations at the rate that the system was designed for, and then...
And that it's going underneath people's basements.
And that it's, yeah, that it's actually able to get into the ground and not, not be captured in, in those pipes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. What would you like to do?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
In planning case 19-10, move that the council approve the request for dimensional flexibility, impervious coverage, parking stall length, and parking setback from 115th Avenue based on the stated findings.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Mr. Harlicker?
I'd just like to, I'm sorry, I'd just like to add, also as part of the planning commission's recommendation was that the landscaping along Dakota Street and 115th be improved to fill in the gaps.
I was just going to ask, does that...
And also that.
...include the conditional approval?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second that includes the landscaping language. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Where are we at here? There we go. All right, and we are at item 12, consider planning case 19-5, consider preliminary and final site plan for 168-unit apartment, Springbrook Drive and 94th Avenue, Real Estate Equities.
Yes, Mayor and council members. The site is located in the southwest quadrant of 610 and Highway 47, off of 94th and Springbrook Drive. It's this four-point, about six-acre site here. What is being proposed is a 168-unit apartment building. Along with this is a proposed plat of this property. That's item number 13 on your agenda. Be plating it into one lot and then dedicated right away for Springbrook Drive and the necessary easements. This site plan has gone through several configurations since the March Planning Commission meeting. The proposal you have before you tonight has changed. The number of units has been reduced from 184, which was in the March proposal, to 168 today. That reduced the density of the project from 41.7 units per acre to 38.1 units per acre. They have increased the number of parking from 270 spaces in March to 285 on the proposal before you tonight, and that increased the, the parking ratio from 1.46 up to 1.7. Site plan here, you've got Pleasure Creek to the south, 610 off here, and 47 is, is to the upper end of the picture, with Springbrook Drive and 94th going this way. This is the entrance into the site. The building is kind of a, a C-shaped, wrapping around the perimeter of the site with most of the parking interior to the site. There is a proposed dog run, tot lot, and then an open space here on the southern end of the site adjacent to Pleasure Creek. As part of this project, the applicant is requesting use flexibility for density, design flexibility for the number of parking stalls, and design flexibility for building setback from Flintwood Street.
Mr. Harlicker?
Yep.
Could you help me with that one? Because Flintwood is...
Flintwood, excuse me, Springbrook.
Okay, yeah, because it said, it said Flintwood, Flintwood in our notes, and I'm going, we're not even near Flintwood.
Yep. That was a typo. It's, it's from Springbrook.
Okay.
There is underground parking along with this, with an entrance here and another entrance exit coming off of this end of the building. Well, we can start with the request for use flexibility with respect to density. This project has been reduced in, in density through the process, but it still exceeds the 30 units per acre requirement in Port Riverwalk. Use flexibility can be approved provided certain findings are met. First one is it advances the intent of the section, and this, this project promotes a compact, vigorous development, takes advantage of nearby transit, the jobs in Evergreen Industrial Park, as well as commercial opportunities along Coon Rapids Boulevard. It includes a well-organized vehicular and pedestrian circulation system with trails around the open space, sidewalk connection out to Springbrook, and a construction of a sectioned sidewalk along Springbrook adjacent to their property. The modifications necessary to provide, develop the property in an efficient and organized way. This project will shrink the gap in affordable housings and the high demand for affordable housing within the city. The increase in density will allow the applicant to include upgraded finishes and amenities, and it will also factor as a catalyst for future development in the port. And the plan provides significant amenities, I mean, that the amenities such as the walking trail, walking path, preservation of existing trees along Pleasure Creek, new landscaping, construction of a privacy fence along the west property line. The building will also include tenant amenities such as a clubroom, fitness center, underground parking, and improved amenities within the unit. Looking at design flexibility for the parking. Parking requirement for this project is 2.25 spaces per unit. What's being proposed is 1.7. So the applicant is requesting design flexibility, excuse me, for that, and finding for design flexibility is a modification is necessary to respond to site conditions, will result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities. The applicant is basing the proposed parking on studies that they've done, as well as studies that have been done by the Institute of Traffic Engineers, that indicate that the proposed parking will adequately serve the that indicate that the proposed parking will adequately serve the parking needs of this development. Proposed parking allows for additional open space in this area. And here on the southern end of the site, and it allows additional open space for amenities such as the dog park and the tot lot in this area here. The final request for flexibility is regarding the setback of this portion of the building from Springbrook Drive. Code requires that it be set back twenty feet from the property line. The intent was to pull buildings up closer to the, to the street. In this case, that's not really an option. The building is proposed to be about ninety feet back from the right-of-way from Springbrook Drive, which is this corner here. That is a result of shrinking this wing of the building. That was done as part of one of the iterations of decreasing the number of units for the project, and then they were able to install parking here. It's also a result from the required setback along Pleasure Creek. There's a fifty-foot setback from Pleasure Creek. So when you've got that point here lined up with the reduction in the length of this wing of the building, that results in the increased setback that exceeds the maximum allowed. Open space on the project, they've got an active open area here, and then they've got green space wrapping around the building. If you look at landscaping, they've got a significant number of trees along Highway forty-seven. That number was increased at the request of the Planning Commission to provide additional screening along forty-seven. They've added trees along here as per code, and additional trees along the drive aisle here. You can see the, the trees are a mix of evergreen, ornamental, and overstorey trees around the perimeter, as well as the landscaping in this area here. The existing trees along Pleasure Creek in this area here will remain. They've supplemented those plantings with new trees in this area here. Parking lot is landscaped also with parking on the landscape medians and islands, as well as shrubs around the foundation of the building. Grading drainage and utilities, this is the grading plan. You'll notice that there's no stormwater pond on site. Stormwater is being managed with an underground system that is underneath the parking lot here. That has changed from the original plan, the original plan was a pond here. So by doing that, they've increased the amount of usable open space on the site. Park dedication will be paid as part of the final plat and will be based on one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars per unit. The building design, the building is four stories high. The exterior materials include stone, horizontal, horizontal, vertical, and board and batten, cement board siding. The variety of materials was carried on through all sides of the building. On the sides facing Highway six-ten here and forty-seven here meet the thirty percent stone finish requirement. The design of the building is such with the C shape and the breaks in the facade, the indentations here and along here to break up the, the edge of the building. The main entrance is here, the center of the site. This is the, main entrance is here, there's a patio here with a roof over it. There will be second story decks, patios on either side of the building over the ground-level patio here. Bicycle racks will be placed near the main entrance as well as bike storage areas within the underground parking area. As you can see, this elevation here is the internal part of the site, looking at the north end here and east end here. That's what it looks like, as you can see from these elevations. This is the west wall and the north wall that faces six-ten. All the materials are carried on around all sides of the building. And then this is the end that is closest to Springbrook Drive and Ninety-Fourth, with this end faces out, and this is the edge that faces Springbrook Drive to the south. At the Planning Commission meeting, five residents spoke at the public hearing. Their main concerns were the project's impact on the neighborhood. They did not believe it fit with the neighborhood. There's not enough open space and no nearby parks. It would generate too much traffic, and there was not enough parking. The Planning Commission, after a lengthy discussion, voted four to three to recommend approval of the proposed site plan with the following conditions. Compliance with Title eleven, all engineering comments be addressed, the applicant enter into a site security agreement, comments from MinDOT be addressed, preliminary and final plat are approved, park dedication be paid prior to the release of the plat for recording and issuance of building permits, and use flexibility for density and design flexibility for parking setback, for parking and setback from Flintwood Street are approved. The commission also recommended by the same vote to approve the use of use flexibility and design flexibility based on the findings in the staff report. The applicant is also in the audience tonight, and they've got a, a presentation they'd like to give to the council.
And item seven, you'll change the language on that from Flintwood?
Pardon?
From Flintwood to Springbrook Drive?
Yep.
Okay. So should we have the applicant come up and do that now then?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Patrick Ostrom with Real Estate Equities. Thank you for considering our project here tonight. As Mr. Harlecker said, there have been a, a number of changes since we last permitted, presented to council, so wanted to just go over those again. Mr. Harlecker touched on a lot of them, I kinda wanna just highlight and explain some of the thinking behind that, so. First, I just wanted to lead with, just to remind the council and reiterate the, the demand for affordable housing in Coon Rapids specifically and throughout the metro area. The, the city's new draft comprehensive plan that's been submitted to Met Council identifies the need of four hundred and fifty-seven affordable housing units by 2030. We're proposing one hundred and sixty-eight affordable housing units, so this goes a long way in helping the city achieve that important goal. Further, we've got, we've done market research that indicates the, the vacancy rate in Coon Rapids for this type of housing is about two and a half percent, which is extremely low and just signifies a large pent-up demand for this type of product. The target market of individuals that will be living here are working-class individuals, targeting sixty percent of the area median income. So the residents are working families, and they do pay their own rent. And as, as rising rents and new market rate projects continue to be built in the area just continues to drive up rents in unrestricted properties and forcing those hard-working families to move to less desirable housing options. So this provides a nice, high-quality housing option with rents that are at an affordable level. So this is just a side-by-side comparison of the two projects from what we had presented to council last, earlier this year, and where the proposal is today. The one on the left shows the one hundred and eighty-four units. It's really more kind of a half-boxy-looking building, and the one on the right is where we are today. Some of the main changes, I'll actually click onto the next slide, a little more zoomed in. The, the biggest changes are reducing this leg of the building down here, drawing that further back, and shifting this wing of the building at more of an angle that kind of runs along perpendicular, or, excuse me, parallel with the property line. And with the intent of really opening up this space and not making it feel so compact and dense and providing options for more parking and green space, and reducing the amount of units all at the same time. And that's based on feedback from Planning Commission and a number of comments we've heard from, from the residents. That also allowed us to, we originally had a sidewalk proposed along this entrance, which we heard some concern about creating too much pedestrian traffic. So by drawing this back, we've now got the sidewalk over here, which allowed us to put in more trees, retaining wall. We have a fence along this property line. We moved the, the tot lot and dog run to the interior of the building to, again, create more privacy for those neighboring residents and not encourage people on that side of the building. And then a, a big change was, this was originally a retention pond planned, which has now moved to an underground stormwater management system, and that freed up about fifteen thousand square feet of green space, of active green space for the residents. We're planning a gazebo down there, and that would give room for residents to play catch, be outside and play in the green space area. So we really tried to address every one of the main concerns of Planning Commission, which was density, parking, and green space. And by, by these changes, we've taken the number of units down from one hundred and eighty-four to one hundred and sixty-eight. We have increased the parking stalls from two, two-seventy to two-eighty-six, which brings us to a parking ratio now of one point seven parking stalls per unit. Significantly increased the green space by eliminating the pond and creating a, a big, large outdoor green space area. And then some of the other items that, that we were able to achieve again were relocating some of the outdoor amenities to the inside and moving the sidewalk and just really increasing the landscaping to try to create more separation and privacy. So this is just a perspective from the, from the highway. Again, Mr. Harlecker touched on some of the exterior materials, all high-quality materials, combination of masonry, Energy Star windows, concrete fiberboard, and metal panels. The interior amenities, all high-quality units. This is an example of a project that we recently completed that some members had an opportunity to come and visit, but the finishes will be very similar to this with solid surface, solid surface countertops, nine-foot ceilings, stainless steel appliances. We do build these very efficiently with low-flow water fixtures, LED lighting, high-efficiency furnace systems. And then some of the more community amenities will have full-time onsite management, secure resident entrances with dedicated package delivery, community rooms with outdoor patio, fire pit, and bocce ball or green space areas, fitness center, tot lot and dog run, and underground parking. And here, here are just some renderings of example other projects that are affordable housing projects that were currently under development, just to kinda indicate the, the quality that we achieve for on these projects and we go into and we develop these type of housing projects. And with that, I can answer any questions.
All right. Mr. Ostrom, how do you, do you, is there a way that you regulate the residents in their lease by their, by the number of vehicles they bring in? To, to look at one point seven parking places per unit, and I look at other units or, or other buildings around town, also workforce housing, that have, for example, we've got one on Mississippi Boulevard that has ninety-six units. They're at a parking ratio of, oh, it's not, what is it, two point five? Two hundred and thirty-eight parking places anyways, yeah, two point, two point, almost two point five. Yet we had to make the street all no parking out there because the cars still parked out there, and then we've made the street no parking, and now they're parking in the college parking lot. And, and I, and I got, just in, in like, we've got one up on one hundred and twenty-first that's very comparable, one hundred and forty-eight units. There are two point two-six spaces per unit, and I drove by there late the other night, and there are still fourteen cars out on one hundred and twenty-first. How do you, how do you intend to regulate the residents to keep them in the parking lot? It just doesn't seem like enough parking.
We don't, I guess, have a restriction necessarily within the lease on that. You know, typically, we would see some of the larger units would have residents who have children living with them as well who don't drive. So on twos and threes, it would be likely you have one or two, two parking stalls per unit, and so I'm just trying to do some quick math as we're talking here.
Okay, but, but the answer is you don't, you don't do any restrictions on site to control the number of cars then?
In answering your question, correct, we don't have restrictions on that. But in looking at, if there were two, if there were two cars for every two- and three-bedroom and one car for every one-bedroom, that'd be two hundred and eighty, and we have two hundred and eighty-six stalls. So we feel we are sufficiently parked, and looking at, I, I guess I'm not familiar with the specific project you mentioned.
No, I understand.
But in a number of other comparables that we're looking at that are existing and currently being constructed of affordable or even market rate, we see one point five, sometimes going even lower. We've also did provide a traffic study to Planning Commission with some of the information they requested, and they projected during the peak parking demand hours, the max we would need would be two hundred and forty-one occupied parking stalls. So we've done a lot of market research, hired traffic engineers, and really looked into it to determine what would be sufficient, and this is where we landed and feel it is sufficient.
Okay, and then the other question might, for Mr. Harlecker, I'm not sure, but they refer to nearby transit. What, what is the nearby transit, are you just talking about the bus stop there on Coon Rapids Boulevard and Springbrook Drive?
Yeah, that and the park, I think there's a park right across the street or across the highway as well. I mean, not necessarily walking distance, but...
Over in Foley on the other side of, okay. Okay, that was all I had. Counsel?
Do you want, you to start?
Sure.
So we've seen this project several different times, I wanna say it's been over a year, that we've worked on it from a workshop perspective and, and whatnot. And it is a really nice project, and it meets the needs of our city. The couple of areas where we're looking at flexibility, from a density perspective, it's not in my mind an issue after sixteen years on Planning Commission, density. Why we ever put an upper doesn't make quite sense, I would think that we would wanna look at that. This is a site that is intended to be in intense use, I have no problem with that. From the parking, our, we've had problems with our parking standards for years. Our parking standards in our community tend to make us overparked, that they're higher than what we actually need. And we, I've seen that site plan after site plan after site plan after site plan, year after year after year. People drive differently than what they did when we set some of those standards twenty, twenty-five years ago. The, the parking is reasonable for that type of building. From a transit perspective, I think the conversation at Planning Commission made sense, you know? Am I going to have a heavy bus route to an empty lot? No, if there is a building with people there, having conversations to add bus stops, to add a transit route is an easy kind of fix, and that's something that tends to have, you know, that conversation is, it's kind of a chicken and an egg kind of a thing, right? But you need to have that. The setback from Springbrook, to me, makes sense. In this instance, we typically wanted to have things fronting on our roads. Having this, because it is a larger building en masse, having it set back farther is still gonna have the same impact that we would want from the setbacks. So for me, I don't see any of the different issues with the flexibility requests because there are amenities and there are additional things that are coming into this building. You know, the tot lot, the gazebo, the outdoor play areas, the bike racks, all of those kinds of things are extra and added that they don't have to do. So from my perspective, it is the kind of housing that we need in our community. We, it's the right place, it's a great project, and I will be supporting it.
So just a quick question from all that. You talked about us being overparked, but we haven't built an apartment building since 1993.
Right, but we, anytime that we've looked at whether they're townhouse, whether they're businesses, we constantly look at what are the needs, even when we looked at River North. The, you know, or you look at Autumn Glen. You know, we have to have the ability to look at what do you really need? When you look at Autumn Glen, where I have assisted living and memory care, do I need to plan parking stalls at that same rate? And our current code doesn't allow that kind of flexibility. So and we would have business after business or site plan come in and go, I don't need that much parking and you know, put that much more impervious surface down. So and in those things that we've done in the last 15 years, I don't know of anything that's come back and said, oh, my gosh, we need to add parking when we have regularly reduced that parking requirement.
If I may just ask a follow-up question on that. When you say when we have regularly reduced that parking requirement, are you talking about other projects?
With design flexibility for parking.
So for example, the Dominion project that's next to the ICE arena, we reduced the parking ratios there as well. Okay.
Mayor Councilmember Johnson and River North, which is being referenced. Because it's a senior project, we discussed this at a staff level earlier today, which there's actually a different parking standard for senior projects. I believe it's 1.2. Probably the most comparable would be the Sherman project at Riverdale Station, which was approved at 1.5. There are some differences there, obviously next to the transit station. So that, that might be able to take, be able to take advantage of, but I just want to clarify that River North is a little different category.
Which would be also then Autumn Glen then as well?
Right, but when those were there, I don't believe we had any special categories for senior housing. We just had parking standards or parking standards.
I don't think that's been added while I've been here.
I, I, I think we took into different, we made accommodations for the type of building. But I believe it was still.
Mr. Mayor, my, my understanding is that correct me on this, that the River North project was approved at the lower standard, which is 1.2 spaces per, I looked at the staff report today. I did not look at Autumn Glen, so I guess I don't know what that is off the top of my head. River North was a little bit different because it is senior housing, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify one thing as well? I misspoke earlier and I, I did get confirmation from our management staff that we actually do restrict cars per unit at two cars per unit. So I misspoke on that, so that is a management policy in place.
Just so that I understand that you're saying the maximum number that any unit can have is two cars?
Correct.
Okay. And so, I mean, in theory, that would be, you know, two cars per unit at 168 units, you're over 300 parking stalls, which, which we don't have. But you're assuming that some of the two bedrooms or three bedrooms are going to have one car and.
That's correct. I, I looked at it thinking if there were two cars for every two and three bedroom and one car for every one bedroom, which I still think is on the high end, that's 280. We have 286 stalls. So I think at a very maximum, we would still be exceeding what would be needed.
Mr. Mayor. So this is, this is a difficult call for me. This is in my ward. It is a wonderful project. I, you know, I, it's a $38 million investment in the city of Coon Rapids. It's good quality housing. The residents of that neighborhood are very right to have participated in sharing information with the council and staff and the Planning Commission because it is a big change in their neighborhood. One way or another, good, bad or indifferent, it's a, it's a big change in their neighborhood because it's going to mean all of those people that you want to have occupy your building are going to be coming and going from that neighborhood on a regular basis. There are, it's funny because when I look at the design, there are some depictions of your project that I look at, especially from the Highway 10 perspective. And I think to myself, that's pretty, pretty neat building to have in Coon Rapids. And then there are other depictions that I have that I just, I gotta be honest with you, this is my own personal taste, so please don't take offense of this. I just don't care for them. But when I look at the overall plan, there's been some real thoughtfulness in sheltering the neighborhood on the neighborhood side from kind of the major impacts of the development, the trees that you've planned, keeping current trees that are on site, a little bit of green space, which I'm just going to agree with the, the mayor a little bit here. I'm wondering if at some point in time you're going to be coming to us and asking to turn some of that into parking lot. And the reason I say that is that knowing Coon Rapids the way that I do, and I see some of the justifications for the flexibility here, talking about better integration with public transit. And then I listened to Councilmember Geisler with the kind of if you build it, they will come kind of approach to things and I don't disagree. That right now it's not well-connected to public transit. There, there is some stuff kind of in the vicinity. But in the middle of winter, which is what I always think about here, is anybody going to get on their bike and ride to the Park and Ride and Foley? And the answer is only the crazy people are going to do that. Now, I say that and yet I think the then what happens falls to us, the city, to reach out to the county and the traveler and to reach out to Metro Transit and to talk about ways that we can connect up better. So I don't think that that's an ultimate negative for your project. I just think that we can't say yes to this project and then hope that all those other things, other people will look at all those other things. I think we need to be actively engaged in bringing those services to this property and, and I would invite staff to do it. Because it's got green space, because it's got amenities that we don't have in other places, because it's my view is that it is going to be a competitive workforce rate apartment complex that is going to up the game for all the other older apartment complexes in Coon Rapids. Because it's a significant investment in the community, I'm willing to support the project. I'm very mindful to the people that are in that community, that it is going to be a change for them. And I think the city staff and us need to continue to listen to them. If what happens is in the future, let's say it gets built and we start finding that the teenagers that live in the building decide not to pay the extra money for a parking stall, but to park out on the street, we need to start talking about some local parking restrictions in a significant way. And roll that into part of the, the transit plan. I don't want to see lines of cars parked outside of this. And if they come back to us with a request for design or site flexibility to expand upon their, their parking lot, because of that issue, we should consider that. I hope it's going to be a positive thing for the community. I know there are people in the neighborhood that are upset about the change. But it's a wonderful investment for frankly, what is right now, what I refer to as a sandbur lot that sits out there on Highway 10. And I think it's going to look good when it's done. Thank you.
Councilmember Guskowjak?
I do have a few concerns that I was going to bring up tonight, but even before I do that, I just realized today this, I wanted to get a little clarification on this parking setback from, from Springbrook Street. The code says a 20-foot setback. And is it correct, you're looking for a variance up to 90 feet? That seems like a four or 500, I don't do the math. It's a very, very big variance.
Councilmember Guskowjak? It, it is significant. The, the 20-foot setback requirement was intended to along the Boulevard to pull buildings up closer to the street to make it a more pedestrian-friendly environment. This is kind of a unique situation in that it's, it's on a, a more quiet residential street. The building is, is four stories high and you've got site constraints that are triggering this request for design flexibility. You've got the 50-foot setback from, from Pleasure Creek, which runs along that whole south property line, which pushes the corner of the building farther back from the, from the property line. You've got the, the parking field in front of the building that put that fills the gap. And they actually reduced the size of the building there in order to reduce the number of units onsite. So that pushed the building back even farther. Initially, it was 30 feet back from the property line. The 90-foot came about after the modifications to the site plan that reduced the number of units.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. If I could maybe then get to my other concerns, I do, I have, I have five concerns with this and I noted them here, so, but one is the density, the, the density of the project. The, the other concern is the parking variance that you're asking because I get calls about parking on city streets outside of apartment buildings that are already at the legal code. They're just, they're spilling out into the street. I have a bit of a concern with the public infrastructure that's around this site. And I do have a concern about the affordability aspect of, of the project itself. And also I have garnered resident feedback on this. So so just starting with the density, you're asking for density variance to build on this 4.6 acres, 168 units. That's, our code calls for 38, or excuse me, our code calls for 30, you're up to 38. That's a big variance. That's a 30% variance, isn't it? In the code. So just the, the density, the density of it, I, I, I think it's too dense. Six or 700 people in this on 4.6 acres is just very dense. The, the parking, again, I, I do have an issue with the parking variance for the, for the stated facts that I have. The other issue that I have or concern that I might have is the, the public infrastructure, actually the lack of public infrastructure around this site. And that's to say there is no park nearby. You do have a little bit of green space there, but the nearest park is actually over a mile away. So if you have this place built, you're likely to have 100 children, maybe more. Where are they going to go? There's just no park nearby. So I'm, I'm just thinking about, you know, do we want to have a neighborhood where the kids don't have anything to do after school, where they don't have a park to go to? I just, I, I have an issue with that. The other thing about regarding public infrastructure is that since it is a TIF financed project, we're going to be essentially building a, a brand new neighborhood in Coon Rapids. And there really won't be any additional tax revenue to support additional public infrastructure or even the increased demands on, on city services, police, fire, admin, park, all those things.
Councilmember Geisler?
Can I address a couple of those concerns potentially?
Well.
Cause I, I, I think, you know, to, to take, so the density, so this parcel is part of Port Evergreen. So there is the Coon Rapids Boulevard framework plan that did the entire, you know, Boulevard and they had the different ports. And the intention was higher density in these ports, right? And so that is the reason why, you know, and whether this gets built or not, this, that, this kind of a building is going to go on that site eventually. Cause that's what this parcel is guided for. And when you talk about there aren't any parks, well, we just did something in Port Riverwalk where there's a whole bunch of units that there isn't a park. You gotta go across the, the major road, but they have a park actually in their building area. So they have a park, a playground right there. So, so that is an amenity that counts as how you would offset from a playground. The, the concept from the TIF, that was a decision that has already been made by this council and is supported by this council.
Correct.
And I, I think it's frustrating that to say, well, now I want to go back on that decision is what you're saying?
Not, not at all. My, my concern is the density. Our code calls for 30 units per acre and this is 38. I believe that our code, our density code was put in place for very good reasons. And this is kind of pushing that away by a pretty big variance. That's my biggest concern with the density.
Density is part of the Port Riverwalk overlay in the ports that was driven to add density. That was done at this point in time that did we know what the density could be? I would look at if before this came up and somebody said, you know, hey, we wanted to say, could we go to 40? Could we go to 50? Could we go to 35? We would have considered that. So to me, that additional density is not an issue.
Mayor, can I address that? I, I'd like to point out though, that the direction that this port, or port was going was not to be so much residential. The residential eventually was going to go away. So that's my understanding of what ultimately is the plan. It was going to be more, more commercial. And, and having said that, then having something with larger density would be fine. But again, the density was set at 30 units. So it, you wouldn't have had such an effect. I think that the size of this is going to have a major effect on the residents and on that neighborhood. I mean, I drive through there and that's, there's a lot of, I mean, that's a very large structure and it's gonna, and there's going to be a lot of people there and it's going to cause.
And Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I, I understand.
I'm just saying, things have changed. So now, so it wasn't that long ago that we, we, we changed the ordinance to allow them to actually put some money into their homes. They, they weren't allowed to do that previously, but now they can.
Right, because that area had been originally guided to say, most of it should be into a more dense. And so this partial is still regulated or guided for a high density.
A high density, but it was set at 30. Arbitrary or not, I mean, it was set at 30.
Yep, I'm willing to make that.
To determine whether that's reasonable.
Exactly.
That's, that's all. Okay. We'll regain control now and just agree to disagree on a couple of different things with density there. Okay. All right, other comments? Councilmember Demmer?
This might be buying time because I'm so incredibly undecided on this. This has been one of probably three really hard decisions in four years. I mean, honestly, right? So I, I absolutely get if you're in that neighborhood, it changes the character of the neighborhood. I, I don't know how to weigh. It's not a big neighborhood. Any neighborhood you add an apartment building to would dramatically change. So if we're going to say a neighborhood this big is going to stop us from building apartments, I don't think we can build any more apartments because this is one of the smaller neighborhoods. And that, that is no disrespect to people in that neighborhood. I'm just saying, if one came into my neighborhood, I'd get the same complaints, but it would be not off the table, right? This is a piece of property right along a freeway. There's not a lot of other uses clamoring for this other than something fairly high intensity. So it's either leave it empty and preserve the, the neighborhood exactly the way it is, or eventually build something. or eventually build something that's going to be high-use. I mean, if it was a hotel, it's going to be high-use. If it was an apartment, it's going to be high-use. I don't know what else is going to go tucked way back in the corner along a freeway. And we have to respect that people who own this land are allowed to develop it to something. You know, could they have turned it into three houses, maybe? Could they have bought three or four of your houses and solved the problem? That would have been nice. Because certainly the person on that corner on 94th and Springbrook, that's, that's going to be a big change for that house. The density, you know, I, I do feel like the 30 is arbitrary, and if the rule had been 40, we wouldn't have that, you know. I, I don't know. It's a four-story building, that's a big building, but it's also about the size of all the apartments I've seen along the freeway that have gone up in the last few years. So that, I mean, it doesn't freak me out. It's pretty close to the boulevard, so it's a couple blocks that it would be nice if they couldn't drive on 94th and they went on Springbrook, so they're only going past Commercial. I think there's a lot of things we could do to make it more palatable. In the end, my biggest complaint is, I really just don't like the building. The design of the building, it, it is, a lot of people driving on 47 are going to come past that building, and it's going to be this really 2010 cookie-cutter building. And we've talked about that a few times. And I don't know how to weigh a couple hundred people who have workforce jobs, working at a call center, need a place to live versus, boy, guys, I think you could have been better. And, and I, I don't say that as an engineer, I say that as someone who talks to design people. That puts me in a box, because I, I, I want to, I want to support that we use this site for what its probably best and highest use is, which is either apartment or hotel. Once I say that, I can't make the neighborhood happy, because at some point, something high-use goes in there. But this wouldn't, and after the conversations we had about not making it look this way, I'm, I'm still very undecided, and the sooner we come to a vote, the harder it's going to be. But here we are.
Starting over, or...
Oh, I don't want to start over.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gazler?
In effect, I'll call the question. I will make a motion in Planning Case 19-5 to approve the preliminary, oops, and final site plan for the apartment building with the stated seven conditions, and saying that we are recommending, based on the findings for use and design flexibility. And do I need anything else?
Do you approve the agenda? Do I get to add anything?
I can't imagine you, we'd listen to the, we watched the planning commission, sir. You know, that was the public hearing portion of this.
I, I guess I'm barking, I just can't believe. Do any of you people have people come and visit you?
All right, sir. Okay, we're not, we're not, we, we went through the whole planning commission. We, we, they sent the link out.
I know, when you're saying about barking, you're not making, 168 units, if someone, each person had someone come visit him one day...
Call the question, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, what, what, it doesn't make sense what you're saying, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you.
Because people have to go visit.
Okay, we're, we're, we're done now.
I have additional comments.
So, so I...
Okay, that was, that was, that was the opportunity, though, for the public hearing portion of this.
So I have, have made...
We were told that we could speak today.
No.
We were under the impression that...
I'm not sure who would have said that.
At the other commission meeting last time.
Yeah. The planning commission themselves, that we could bring these comments to you guys. The planning commission...
Well, that was, that was how they were brought to us, was through the planning commission.
I have additional comments I would like to raise.
Yeah, at the end of their meeting, they said if we had, and it's on the video, that if we had more concerns, we could come and talk to you guys about it.
Well... Yeah, so then the, there's, there was opportunity to address us individually.
This is the first opportunity since the last planning commission.
No, sir, we've, we've had emails and phone numbers online, and that's how you addressed your council. Hold on a second. Mr. Fernelius, do you, what was said at the planning commission?
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I was in attendance, and the typical practice of the chair is to announce that it is a recommendation of the planning commission, and I believe that's what was stated. I don't believe there was anything on the record that there would be additional public testimony. The public hearing was held at the planning commission, and that is the opportunity to provide feedback.
I've emailed people on this board, and I haven't got any response. I've been emailing Mr. Johnson since March, I haven't got a single response. He's my district representative.
Yep, and I'm going to speak to that, because one of the things that we do is we all gather information from various sources. And we gather information from the emails that you send to us. Doesn't require a response all the time. We gather information from staff who has talked to you and others. We gather information from planning commission members. We gather information from our colleagues who have had an opportunity to speak to you. We gather information from all sorts of sources, so...
And mostly from the developer, right?
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor. We don't have a second.
We don't have it at all.
Do we have a second?
Watch, it's on the video. It's on the video.
Do we have a motion, and we have a second?
Watch the end of the video, he says we can talk here. It's on the video.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know what that would have been. Yeah. Councilmember Guskowiak?
One of my points was resident feedback. And the reason I brought that up as a, as a, as a point is that I did get resident feedback on this project. I didn't get any positive resident feedback on this project, I'll just say that. I did get feedback opposed. But even going before this project was even conceptualized, while I was out talking to people unsolicited, I would get feedback that says, Brad, we don't really need or want more high-density residential. The open tracts that we have in Coon Rapids, they're saying reserved for business or for multifamily. So that, that's the resident feedback aspect that I was talking about. I just wanted to share that with the council and with the folks in attendance here.
This particular area is zoned high-density residential, so...
Sure, I understand.
Right, and, and it's, and it's, and it's along those lines that, you know, we all get that kind of feedback. You know, we, we get feedback from various areas in our community. They don't always even come from this neighborhood. They come from other neighborhoods that are impacted by some of the more high-density developments that we have approved in even recent times. I mean, you don't have to go back more than a couple of years to talk about the impact of the neighborhood that surrounds the Sherman Development and the traffic patterns that go there. These are the same kinds of issues that we face all the time. Now, I am concerned that what I'm hearing from some people in the audience is they are very want-to-do, and it's very fine for them to do it, is to raise that they had, they feel they had or understood that they had an opportunity to speak here tonight. Now, historically, we have had multiple meetings on this, including workshops, that are all public meetings, where we listen to everybody that comes in. We also have meetings... Well, you know what, they're published. And the, the reality is, is we do that so that the community can get engaged, and we do listen to people in the community as well. All sorts of people in the community. I've had people in the community say to me, I don't want high development or high-density developments to come into the neighborhood. I understand that, that view and that approach. I also have people say to me, boy, I wish we had the same kind of development that they have just over the river on 610 in the Champlin area and in the Brooklyn Park area. Why can't we get developments like that over here? I have local business people say, people don't want to live in Coon Rapids because we have such outdated housing stock. You've heard that. Everybody here in this community has heard that. That's why we've been investing in homes for generations. That's why we've been investing in new developments in various different ports in the city. Those are the things and issues we're wrestling with. And it's no disrespect to anybody in that particular neighborhood that this company wants to come in and says, boy, there's a spot, there's a spot on Highway 10, and we're willing to invest $38 million in, in that area. So it, it may change the area. And that is a dynamic that we are actually trying to encourage, which is changing an area for the positive for the whole city. And it does impact people who are in proximity to those developments, because it means their neighborhood is going to change. So we're not unempathetic about that, and we've been listening to all sorts of people about it. Now, the one thing that I wrestle with here today is whether more needs to be done on this development to satisfy some of the concerns that are being raised. Councilmember Demmer raised the design aspects. We all have identified, myself included, that we're not happy with the parking ratios. And that we think that if this project is going to get off on a good footing in the future, that it's going to have to have a better public transit plan associated with it. Those are things that we should probably discuss at the discussion phase here if we're going to vote on this at this point in time.
Yeah, we, and we have a motion and a second, so we are in the discussion portion of this.
So I'm going to defer to other councilmembers, so I can listen.
I think, I think that it's, that it's a bit of a shock for the neighborhood, any building that would go up there. I think it's a beautiful building, I think, I mean, I, other than, with the exception of the Gulag look. No, not, well, that's right, no disrespect, yeah. I mean, I think it brings in amenities, it brings in needs, but my concern from the very beginning has been the density and the parking ratios. And it's, and I wouldn't, the, the density really isn't that big a deal, except that it impacts the parking ratios. You know, that's, and I, I gotta believe that's why it's at 30, because then you can, then you can actually get the parking that's necessary. Because I don't want to deal with this later. I don't want to have to come back, and now we got to put parking regulations in here. And I supported the Sherman project at 1.5, but I did that because the county was pushing us for that development. And frankly, there, there's the whole park and ride parking lot there. I thought, if there's a problem here, they're just going to park there on that, and they can deal with that. It wasn't going to spill out onto our streets. The, the one that keeps getting referred to, the Pedersen Floral Site down on Coon Rapids Boulevard, which was even lower parking that we, that we approved, the building hasn't built. There was letters from Mercy and letters from, from the Community College that said, we need this building for our employees, and they can walk or bike from each of those. It was very close. And so, plus it's a very blighted property, I was willing to go along with that. But we never ever got, we didn't get to experiment, see if that actually worked, because we don't have anything that's this parking, this, this low, no standard apartments that are not senior apartments, that have this low of a, a ratio. So I'm, I, I was hoping that it would come back to us with, with a more reasonable parking ratio, in my opinion. So I will not be supporting this. Mr. Mayor, may I?
Mr. True.
So one thing I could suggest is, we're trying to balance the green space and the parking. We could suggest building on proof of parking. Showing on the green space that we have there, we can fit X amount of stalls. I don't know what the number is now, but building that into the approval, so if in five years it becomes an issue, it's already approved, that we could go and replace that with parking to help increase that ratio.
I have the adjacent houses that make more parking.
And... To that, to that end, 100 and...
Really, the people in the adjacent houses, please, please get them to stop.
Please, stop.
Okay.
You have 168, I believe it was, underground parking spaces, no, 168...
That's correct.
Units, yeah, 168 underground park, so you're, so that's assuming that people on this median income or below this median income are going to be willing to spend $75 a month for that parking place as well. And I think that's what part of these other units run into, is they, people aren't willing to pay that, so they're willing to either park in the street or park other places. So I, I think that there's more challenges than, than just the surface parking. I think it's, so much of the parking is underground, which is a great feature, but if people aren't willing to pay for it or can't pay for it, it becomes...
More heavily parked.
Yeah.
And I, I guess, if I may, Mayor, from the supportable comparables we get for this, and in order for our lenders to agree to use that underwriting and our investors, we need to show a significant amount of backup that shows other properties do have similar parking ratios underground and charge similar rates. And we're finding that that is the case. And I don't think it's a matter of not having another place to park. I think it's a matter of, it's Minnesota, and it's winter, and it's cold, and people want to have covered parking. I guess regarding some of the design issue concerns, if there are still any, I mean, we still do have to come in for building permit review at some point. So if there was, I mean, we'd be open to looking into what we could do. And building permit review is, you know, the point, this is not finalizing all the final plans, so there's still another review there to make some modifications if necessary. So on those two points, we just wanted to put that out there as a possibility to help maybe alleviate some of those concerns.
Councilmember Demmer?
So I, I did listen to a few phone calls. One was about an hour long, just... But here's the thing, and I, I get this all the time, too. The two, number, top two things I hear from residents, I don't want any apartments, I don't want any density, but I want you to improve Coon Rapids Boulevard. And I don't know how to, how to deal with that, because businesses don't come to streets that don't have traffic. So that's our, that's our challenge, right? Try to increase the traffic, but don't increase the number of people. I would love to see that area improved, right? I, I really would. It's not going to happen without more people. It, it just won't. I, I, I get it, right? No, I, I, I understand, I do, I do. No, 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 it's fair. It's your neighborhood, right? You guys, you know, it, it's the exact thing we are hired to try to make decisions on, and it's not easy. Because, you know, we, we have multiple stakeholders, right? We have the people in the neighborhood, we have the people in the city in general, we have the businesses in the city, and yeah, we, we do have the developers. I've not had any one-hour conversations or any conversations with the developers outside the meetings. I know developers make sure that they figure out a way that they make their money. I'm not, I'm not blind to that, right? There, there's, the, the first thing that happens is they make, they make sure that there's, there's profit in it for them, and, and look, they're not going to build it to lose money. At some point, I understand traffic patterns are changing. I, I understand that fewer people in this bracket are driving cars. I understand that you're doing something very reasonable to me, which is making your calculation based on the number of cars per bedroom, not the number of cars per unit. I would love to know more about how well that works, right? So if two-bedroom houses tend to have two cars and one bedroom, or two-bedroom apartments tend to have two cars and one, tend to have one, unfortunately, the vote's tonight, so I'm probably not going to get to learn about that. I'm more than happy to no-park the entire street. That, that, that would be fine. If that's the way it goes, if this passes, I would, I'd be no problem voting for that, and then make sure the ticket is high enough that it's more expensive than underground parking, and, and that problem will be solved. My worry is that your comparables are in cities that aren't like Coon Rapids. Quite frankly, I, I don't know what the parking ratios are on outer-ring suburbs versus inner-ring suburbs versus Minneapolis. I'm sure in Minneapolis, it's closer to 1 to 1. And so if you're using an average or a standard deviation of some sort, I have no idea. I will tend to trust an engineer's traffic estimate, because I don't have any better way to trust things. And, and again, I know that design is a matter of, of taste, but this is a very, you know, it's a lot of cut and paste that looks a lot like things where I, I, my biggest concern on the design elements are, it's going to look like it was built in 2010, which means it's going to look like it was old the minute it started, and we're not going to have, you know, it's, it's just, it's that same pattern of what we see in Fridley, what we see in Brooklyn Park. It doesn't meet that unique and interesting design that we tend to reference when we say we're going to give somebody flexibility. And, and that's, quite frankly, my biggest challenge. And, and everything else is just a hard decision, so. But the, the understanding that we, we can't improve Coon Rapids Boulevard without bringing more people to Coon Rapids Boulevard is the part we wrestle with. And just, quite frankly, if we could, it would be a lot easier. And just, quite frankly, if we could, it would be a lot easier. I, I promise that we haven't figured out any better way.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I don't think I could've said it any better than, than Councilmember Demmer. And candidly, he and I had a conversation that probably was about forty-five minutes on this issue. Which started when I was driving home from work and then I just sat there in my car in the garage and finished the conversation there because we were already on the phone. Candidly, I wish we were at a different point right now. And the point I wish we were at was we had a better comfort level of the parking situation and we had a better comfort level of how this was gonna plug into public transit. I don't feel like I have satisfactory answers to those things. I have encouraged the developer here and part of the reason we are talking about lower densities now, a hundred and sixty-eight units rather than a hundred and eighty-two, and higher parking ratios, 1.7 versus the original 1.4 or so that I think it was, is because of the input that this council gave to this developer back in workshops a long time ago, when the council was concerned about the very issues that everybody in the neighborhood is here to hear about today. What I was, I was a little surprised, candidly, when you moved the motion, because I thought we were gonna get around to a point in the discussion where we might table this for further input from the city staff and maybe even some other original ideas from the developer. So, I've said what I, I think need to say. My vote might come as a surprise to some, but I'm ready to vote on at least this motion that's here.
Okay. Process question?
Sure. Councilmember Demmer?
So this is a vote on this specific site plan, which includes the elevations, which are pretty close to final, which includes the, and then the plats come next, but, but this is, this is where the parking, this is where the design elements, this is where we say that's all okay. So I get what happens if we vote yes. If we vote no, what happens? They're allowed to submit a different site plan after working more. I don't know if they would, if they'd walk away. I think, I think you see you can get to the number of votes you need with, at, with some design, right? So this is what I'm not sure of. I, I don't know what happens if it's, I know what happens if it's four to three one-way, I don't know what happens if it's three to four.
Do you have a question for Mr. Brody? He was looking like he might have an answer.
Looking at one of these threes, I'm not sure.
Mr. Brody?
If you vote, then we've got a motion, it's vote to approve, obviously you know what that answer is. If you vote, it's, like I said, it's a little awkward in the sense that, if you vote to deny it, and it's, it's awkward in the sense that the project would not go forward. My recommendation would be we'd come back with some findings of denial, because I think some have been articulated tonight, and then we would adopt those at the next meeting and then they can take those and go from there. At that point, I think they would have to go through the whole planning process again if they wanted to bring forward a site plan, a different site plan, because it's, at this point, this one has been denied. I suppose there's motions that wouldn't be to reconsider, because it's not at tonight's meeting, but to undo what we did tonight, that's more complicated, but certainly not out of the realm of possibility, and I don't know how all that plays in with what you guys are looking for in terms of different amenities. So, I don't know, I, I presume that we, I mean, we've got a, a motion on the table or on the, before the board, or before the council. What I'm not a hundred percent clear on, but I think Robert's rules are a guide, is that whether we could do as Councilmember Johnson suggested and simply table the matter, we'd have to remember what, we'd have to remember sixty days and those kinds of obligations, although I think they've been waived at this point. I also don't know at that point, too, the consequences if we come back with a totally different plan, and who knows what the developer wants to do. Maybe they want us to vote it up or down tonight on its merits. If there was a significant enough change when we came back, do we have to go through, back through the pan, planning process again, because the site plan's changed in a material fashion? So I wish I could provide you clear and concise guidance, but I don't know if I can do that. I think there are options, just may, we might not do the end result of those options.
I did wanna follow up with what the difference between tabling and voting no would be as far as restarting. Like if you table it with specific goal in mind of finding out more information, and then the plan doesn't change, then I understand where we are.
Sure.
If you table it with the idea of making changes...
Sure.
It seems a little weird to send it through planning just for us to have to approve it again.
Well, I mean, if, it may require enough where you're looking at a material change that, hey, now this is a different plan, we haven't had, all the input.
Public hearing.
Things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
So, a, a couple of hypotheticals here, right? So, for me, if it's a yay, you know what happens, if it's a no, they would have to start the entire process, all the fees, everything again. Where tabling, the question is, can you remove a motion from...
Can you withdraw a seconded motion?
Sure. I mean, we can, if you're implying to do that...
And, and so that's where I would ask my peers, would a table allow further discussion to get you to the point where we could look at something that, you know, because I'm not sure where everybody's at, but I think it's close.
If I may just respond to that, I think it's all gonna depend upon what the developer can come up with and how they respond to, to that extra time.
Right. And, and to, to say, as a developer, I'm willing to withdraw my motion and move to table if the developer is amenable to that, or if we wanna have a decision tonight.
Mayor and councilmember?
Mr. Johnson.
I guess I would, a couple things. If it's a discussion around design and potentially parking, we can continue to have those discussions. If it's gonna result in uncertain answer on the number of units, that will pose some issues for us. We have received an allocation of taxes and bonds from the state, which we have a hard deadline to close on in about three weeks. That's actually the item that was moved from number seven down to this. And if we don't have approval of a, of a number of units for the project, I don't think we'll be able to close on those bonds and they'll be gone. And it's very competitive, the, the state of Minnesota is actually out of taxes on bonds for the year, so those bonds will more than likely end up going to another project outside of Coon Rapids. The competitiveness is probably gonna be the same next year. We, we talked about maybe eventually something high-density would happen here, but it hasn't thus far. Construction costs are in a place that are manageable to get this done. We have the bonds in place, we have an investor in place, we have our lenders in place. Interest rates are favorable and moving. Construction costs are favorable but increasing rapidly. So we can execute on this, but we need to know kind of what our unit count and mixes. Again, if it comes down to some exterior designs and things like that, we can continue to massage that as long as it's not a substantial change to the project at this point.
So you need to know in two weeks at our next meeting? And I'm not here.
Two, two weeks is too late.
Plus, I mean, if we table it till next meeting, we'd all have to vote, because the idea's got three, but I'm not here in two weeks, so that would be pretty bad of me to say.
I think to clarify, I think our deadline to close is June, I think Mr. Brown and Mr. Fernealios have been in those conversations with by and council the 24th, I believe, June 24th. Which, depending on what happens if we're to get tabled and happens on the next meeting, could be a tight timeframe.
Still leaves just one meeting and you won't be here.
I know. Darn.
All right. So at this point, we still have a motion and a second on the, on the floor here. Councilmember Skovian?
If I just may, on my last point of affordability, and it goes a little bit to the parking, as the mayor said, the underground parking is an added expense for these folks. Do we need more affordable housing in Coon Rapids? Yeah, I mean, we need more affordable housing in the state and the, in the country, right? But what I'm seeing is that with the level of support, let me go back to the, where you questioned, can we re, re, redo the TIF? We can't, of course. We approve that, knowing that something would go here and knowing that there are certain city codes that would be met, density, parking setbacks, all that. What I'm seeing here is there's, there's just too many variances for me to support it right now. And the other thing, going to the affordability, is that what I'm seeing, and I'm not a rent expert, I'll, I'll grant it that, I have talked to some, some local apartments in Coon Rapids, and it seems the rents that are being proposed at this proposed unit are at, or maybe even higher than some of the rents that we have in Coon Rapids today. So I kinda question, if we build a unit like this and the rents are higher than the median in Coon Rapids, wouldn't that tend to just raise our median rent up across the state, across the, the city? So I kinda get, to, to my point is, with TIF financing and federal credits and bonds, we should have a project that I feel is more affordable. It seems like we could do better in terms of affordability. So, for all those stated reasons, I would, I would oppose this project going forward right now.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember?
Mr. Olson?
I, I guess, I don't know exactly what properties you're looking at. I, we have seen a number of properties where the rents are higher. We do have market studies from third-party consultants that indicate our rents are a few hundred dollars lower than other comparables, and they get to that number based on, if you just looked at another property that's, I don't know, thirty years older and at face value compared it, they're, they're not gonna be the same, because do they have the same amenities, washer and dryers in the units and the quality of product? So, sure, there are other apartments that are charging lower rents than where we are. Again, back to the, the data point about a two-and-a-half percent vacancy rate, I mean, there are just no other places to live, too. And this is a higher-quality product. Maybe it's a little bit higher than some of those older buildings, but compared to, if somebody wanted to go live in this nice of a building that's built up the street and it's market rate, they're gonna pay thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars for a one-bedroom. So they don't even have the possibility to live in that because of their income level, so.
I appreciate that feedback, and I do understand the quality of your building and the building materials, the interior, all the features are a step up from the meeting that we have in Coon Rapids, so I appreciate that feedback.
Well, at this point, we have a motion and a second. We have further discussion.
I still don't feel like I'm sensing we're ready to vote, but, you know...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It's, it's kinda hard for me to look to say, I mean, because there's councilmembers that we haven't heard from. So, I don't have an idea of if we need to have more, more time for this, or even if more time is gonna be meaningful for some of the folks, right? So, you know, if, if people are for it regardless, or against it regardless of, you know, a delay, you know, I don't have that sense to be able to know if I would wanna move for a table. I wish I had more feedback from folks.
So, Councilmember Kikra?
I'll weigh in. You got my feedback. I, I feel, I feel like, you know, density in this situation is an issue, and obviously that is gonna affect the parking a lot. And, and I know we've talked a little bit about, you know, we could possibly work on that, restricting parking in the neighborhoods and stuff, and I, I, I'm not a big fan of that, only because what we end up doing by restricting parking in the neighborhoods is, is we affect the neighborhood, rather than, you know, and that we really don't wanna do. That's not, that's not the intent. So, I'm not sure if, if there's a way that, that, you know, that parking can be remedied without a solution like that, you know, moving out into the neighborhood. I have to admit, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the green space as well. I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, we went from, we, we raised the number of, of three bedrooms from thirty-two to forty. So, I assume we're expecting families. And, and I'm, I have to admit, I'm, I'm a little concerned about where kids are gonna go, where kids are gonna play. I mean, even younger kids, kids are in an elementary school and they wanna hang out with their friends, and, you know, they're gonna have to go outside the neighborhood to do that. They're, you know, and, and, and quite frankly, you know, it's, it's fairly locked in. I mean, you've got major, you've got Highway 10, you've got 610, and, and you've got Coon Rapids Boulevard, so it's, it's, it's pretty contained in there, so it's gonna make it difficult for the kids. So I, I do have a concern about that. I, I have a concern that they don't have a place to play. I don't know what they're gonna do. So, as of right now, I wouldn't support the project.
Your honor, unless my bearings are off, isn't there a park just east of Foley, a very large park, that you don't have to cross any major streets, all residential streets to get to? Which I don't think is the only issue here, but I'm just, I don't think it's that far away. I'm forgetting the name, you know, over there.
No.
But, you know, my neighbors were unhappy when the Sherman Project went in. They didn't want apartments. I realize nobody wants change, and we can talk about this for six more weeks, we're not gonna change any neighbor's mind. And I don't think this has the votes, and that's fine. In my opinion, if there's a place where apartments belong, it's in this place. You know, I voted against them in areas that I think they don't fit. I voted for them in my own neighborhood, because I thought they fit. I look at it as what's best for the entire city. Any project, when you expand a road, it's for the betterment of everyone, but it's not great for the people that lose twelve feet of their property. But we do it, that's the way it is. People that are the closest to a project are the only ones that suffer. The whole city may benefit, the people that are close suffer. We make those votes all the time. And, and like I say, if this is gonna go down, so be it. But to beat it to death and table it, and then six weeks later, or two weeks later, or whatever, to me, it's just, and I don't, I don't design buildings, you know? Half the buildings that go up, I think, are ugly. Nobody asked me, you know? And, so that part of it doesn't bother me, that's, that's a personal taste. The amenities, you know, the reason these may, would be rented, have you been in the old buildings in Coon Rapids that were built in the seventies? I mean, there's no comparison to what is the inside of these buildings look like. So, I agree with Councilmember Johnson, it may up the game of some of our older apartments, and that'd be a good thing. But like I say, if this, this is gonna go down, that's fine, I'm not gonna lose any sleep over it, but, you know, to table it without any real purpose doesn't make any sense to me.
My, my only purpose for tabling it is simply to address the, the parking component. I, I'm willing to be open-minded about the, what I think is candidly a small deviation on the density component, but if it's not coupled with an accommodation, a more significant accommodation, candidly, for the parking component, at this point in time, I'm not in a position to be able to support it. Now, you all have heard me say, "I wanna see this thing built." It's a thirty-eight million dollar investment in the city of Coon Rapids. And frankly, I'm, I'm a little astonished by what I hear, hear today a little bit, because it's, it's kind of like they're almost building too good a project. You know, there are components of this project that we have been turning down other developers in the past for that these people are bringing to the table. But unless there's a plan to connect it up, because we're making findings that we're making an accommodation or a variance, if you will, that's probably not the right word, but making an accommodation for some of these components, because it's going to better connect us to public transportation, I need to see the plan. I need to see the plan, it's how we're gonna do it. It's Acorn and Alder Park are the parks that you're talking about, which are in my ward. But candidly, they're not gigantic parks. The better thing to do for this kind of building... The better thing to do for this kind of building is to then reinvest candidly more money from the city to connect this building to the trail system and to have public transportation a plan for it to come in and out of the neighborhood so that people can get around the community a little bit better for it. That's part of the challenge and the problem, and so I think, you know, what to do, when, and the timing of it is a real difficult thing here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kaiser?
I would be willing to amend my motion to add another condition, you know, so out of the seven, to add an eight. That would be, because, you know, the transportation plan, that's on us, that's not on us.
I know.
Right? That the city prepares and puts forth a transportation plan to service the site.
That's not a condition on the developer, though.
It's a condition on the approval.
Your Honor, as a second, I would not second that motion. Transportation is extremely expensive, and that's why you don't see cities have little buses run through little residential streets. People have to walk to main thoroughfares because no one can afford to have that kind of transportation. I mean, Coon Rapids Boulevard, where there's a bus stop, is about as close as most people have, and it's just, I mean, other than the traveler, which is, you know, a very unique, you know, we're not going to pay for transportation, it's just not reasonable.
So, Mr. Mayor, my apologies if I was unclear. For me, that plan is working with Metro Transit to ensure that there's enough cycles on Coon Rapids Boulevard to meet the needs of that, you know, because if the, I don't know what the current schedule is for how often something stops there, you know, or, you know, that we would, I mean, I think even, regardless if it's on the motion, that we have an obligation, if there's a larger project to come in to help facilitate conversations with Metro Transit to ensure that it's served. So, I mean, I wasn't looking at something that the city would own or do. To me, it was just facilitating those conversations.
Mayor? Go ahead, Mr. Allstrom.
I guess, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, short timing, so I don't want to sit here and say, make promises of changes we can make. I would, I guess, rather than get a vote no tonight, I'd rather get a table, and maybe if it ends up deciding that we can't come back, then that's our decision, but I'll look at what we can do. I, I, I mean, we're kind of trying to handscut stuff as we go, but...
Your Honor? Councilmember Demmer?
So... It's hard for me to hold up a big project because of design preference. I get that, right? You know, this was something we had talked about changing, and it was my, my hope that it would change a little bit differently, but it wasn't like I gave you a guidance, and it's not like I'm a designer. On the parking side, I have no idea what number's the right number for other people. If it was ten more, would that be enough? Is it maybe fifty more before it's enough? You know, I just don't have a feel for what people would be happy with. If it was, they needed to do twenty more parking spots and we made that a finding, and they couldn't do it, then it falls apart and they can do it, you know. I don't know if there's a method to it that way. I would, the part I don't want to do is if I'm the swing vote, and we table it, and I'm gone in two weeks, then I'm just kind of a coward. Right? So, I'd rather put it to a place where we put a finding in now that forces the work to happen than go that way. And I guess that probably goes to Mr. Johnson as to what that finding would have to be.
Look, I, I mean, this is a little bit arbitrary on my part, but I've thought, and I've talked to others on this, that I'm not comfortable with a parking situation. I've tried to make this clear to just about every developer that's come in on these things in the past. If you're not at two-point-oh and/or above, I think it's difficult for me to support it in a suburban community like Coon Rapids, especially when you're on a site where likely there's going to be, have to be some driving that's being done to get to grocery stores and to get to parks and to get to public transportation. You know, I, I live up Foley. My neighborhood is one of those neighborhoods that got cut off from all the parks for all intents and purposes because the county decided to put up hard median in Foley Avenue and really decreased the access in and out of our community, and that changed the character of our neighborhood. But I don't think it's just parking alone. You know, I think it's, I think it's the city looking at how we can move people in and out of that piece of property. I do think that at some point in time, that neighborhood, whether it's fifteen years or twenty years or forty years, is going to evolve, like many neighborhoods that are in that kind of situation where they're surrounded by a lot of commercial uses, is going to evolve along the lines of the port. And that's going to be quickened if a building like this gets built. So I think we, as a city, need to be thinking about how we're going to move people in and out of there by better trail systems, serious better trail systems that are connecting up the city to other trail systems. I want people to be able to get from there to the pedestrian bridge that we're going to be talking about later, and getting over into the neighborhood to take some down to the Coon Rapids Dam. But if we don't have that plan in place now, how can I support this?
Mr. Allstrom.
Yeah, so now we're back to, it doesn't sound like tabling it is an issue either. I mean...
Not if there's a two-week deadline.
What's that?
If there's a four-week deadline, it's different than if there's a two-week deadline. I don't want to not be...
Yeah, and I don't want to put it to a position based on that either. Because maybe there, it's really, Bond Council, who represents the city, would have to make that determination if they think there's a viable project to close, so. We're just kind of moving things around here. I mean, I'm not running any numbers or anything, but again, if it's a condition, we could, it would probably mean that centerpiece, one, two-story amenity area, we could maybe shift some units on top of that. We would actually lose a few units, probably, getting down to one-sixty, pick up some parking stalls, and that gets us like a one-point-eight-five parking ratio. Now, this is me not even knowing if the numbers work, but trying to keep stretching and pushing as far as we can, because we've been doing that. We've addressed each of the items that have been brought up at planning commission, and we think it's a great project, great location, and I, if this project doesn't happen, like I said, the bonds that are already here for this project are going to be gone. I don't, yeah, so I'm, we're trying to do as much as we can here.
And I think it's a beautiful project, and it really is something that we need, and it would raise the bar for all of our other apartments. I'm just not willing to put myself out in the, with the parking. I mean, if you, if you, in your lease, authorize people to have up to three-hundred-and-thirty-six cars, some are only going to have one, but we're still, we're still short. And I don't want to impose prohibitions on the street parking there because that's not fair to the neighbors, and I don't want them to be parking in the hotel parking lots because that's not fair to them either.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kaiser?
I guess, a question. So, what I'm starting to hear is Commissioner Johnson with a two-point-oh, Mr. Mayor with, you know, enough for a two for lease, that means you need to come up with fifty-one spots. And I guess I would, you know, if you think that there is a possibility to come up with fifty-one spots or remove a unit or two, so you have to come up with a few less, I would recommend removing it, the motion, and going to a table to give you time to do that calculation, and if you say there's no way that you're ever going to get there, I would say we make the motion tonight. And I guess, I want to know if you think that it's possible to get yourself into that two-oh ratio. I know you guys have worked really hard already.
I think it's possible. I, Mayor, councilmember, it's possible, I think, another, real quick, we were looking now, this kind of, again, balancing the green space, if we did some rough changes that I made, that I mentioned, we would be at two-hundred-and-ninety-five stalls roughly for a hundred-and-sixty units. That's one-point-eight-six. If we did a proof of parking in that green space area where if it became an issue down the street, or down, yeah, down, yeah.
Yeah, on the street.
We could, just based on the size of that space, we're thinking maybe another twenty stalls. That gets us up to about two, one-point-nine-six-eight-seven-five parking stalls, so.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kaiser?
With, with that, if, I would like to remove my motion to move to then table to give the applicant the opportunity to address what seems to be the primary issue of parking, and if I would get agreement from council that we'd be willing to look at this if they got that parking issue resolved.
Mayor? Councilmember Scovia?
Regarding that, as I've stated, I have, I think we all have more than one issue with this, and the parking is a big one, but if you do even think about removing that green space, then you leave absolutely no area for the children in that place to kick a ball, to play catch with their parents, to get out of the house after school. And I would just challenge my councilmembers, would you want your children living in that environment? Would you want your grandchildren living in that environment? The bond thing that you mentioned, earlier in the, in the meeting, there was the Galloway Place, bond issue, and that was thirty-seven, thirty-four units, and right in the public document, it noted in there that they have two playgrounds and a basketball court for thirty-four units. You're proposing no playgrounds, and even maybe thinking about removing the green space, I think it even takes, takes me farther away, so I'll just throw that out there.
Yeah. You know, I mean, if people on this council aren't going to change their mind by having them go back to do work, I don't want to make them go back and do work. That's a futile effort.
Right, right. But it also isn't fair to make everybody commit to what they're going to vote on without seeing what they come back to either. And I don't think the reason, with Councilmember Demmer not here...
You could probably go to a remote meeting.
Yeah, I don't...
Mayor, councilmembers?
I would like to remove my motion from the table.
Is there a policy?
Would you agree to that?
I'll agree.
So, I don't think that technically meets the Roberts rules, but I think it's an easy, I think it's a way to get out of this.
Do we need to vote to remove the motion?
I guess I'm not sure where you're heading. Are you going to head to then? I'm not sure where you're heading next.
I'm withdrawing.
Withdrawing your motion? Okay.
She'd like to withdraw her motion, and then, and then we'd look at tabling it after we've, we're done talking about it.
Your Honor, are you comfortable with that removal?
Well, like I say, I don't know that that meets Roberts rules.
Probably doesn't meet, but...
Once the motion and the second is out, then it really belongs to the council, but...
I think for procedurally speaking, to move this along.
Councilmember Wells? The next Tuesday, we have a scheduled meeting, so, and it was the intention to not have a July second meeting, so just know the time, if we were going to do a workshop, you know, it's going to have to be a different day next week to get a workshop in.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and their, their time expires June twenty-fourth anyway, so the July meeting is...
And Mayor, councilmembers, is there a policy around calling special meetings for the council? Just so Councilmember Demmer...
Like a workshop?
I don't know if it can be approved at a workshop, or if it needs to be...
Well, it can't be approved at a workshop, but, well, unless we call it a special meeting, I suppose, but, but the next meeting is actually timely, because the next meeting would be on the fifteenth, right? No, nineteenth, eighteen.
It's too late for my math to work. Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor, council, yes, you're correct, the next regular counseling is the eighteenth. I guess the developer will have to decide if, depending on what happened, if, we're presupposing a lot of things, but if it came back on the eighteenth and a decision was made, if that's enough time to meet their financing guidelines, that's a question we'll have to answer. Terms of a work session, we do have Summer in the City next Tuesday, but we have other days next week, but that only gives them about a week or so, if we have it Wednesday or Thursday, to evaluate whatever they're bringing back, if that's, if that's a timeline. And that would only require a three-day meeting notice that there's going to be a work session at the council.
So, so could we have a, like a work session before the meeting on the eighteenth? Like earlier, like maybe six o'clock? Give them time to present and...
Mayor, council, yes, we could do that. We do have our certified annual financial report that's scheduled to be presented at six-thirty, but if council's open to the idea of meeting at five-thirty to consider whatever proposal comes back, again, assuming that one would, then certainly that's at the discretion of the council.
Yeah, and then, and whatever they would come would be enough time for the meeting notice, and then, because we're going to need to get that out to the neighbors, too, because it'll be a different plan than, you know, a somewhat different plan. I don't think this can bring them on board, but it, my, I think my, well, we've already talked about this. Okay.
So, do we need to have any vote or anything, or is it just a council agreement?
Motion to table three in row. That doesn't make sense to vote on the next two either. Let me think about, yes, and let me just think about, we have a public hearing, so we would, geez, I suppose.
We could, you could...
Open it.
Contingent on...
No. We could open and continue it, so, would be my suggestion on that one. We would continue the plat approval, and then, so yes, we would essentially continue all three. It'd just be procedural, we'll have to do a couple of things on the, on the hearing. You're looking at me?
I'm listening. I'm looking at you. I'm looking at the big box.
Yeah, so we'll get to, that part we can get to. So I would suggest that we, we are postponing this to a definite time, so we would make a motion to postpone this to our next council meeting, which is on...
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I will change the motion to table this item, which is Planning Case nineteen-dash-five, to our June eighteenth meeting.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table to the June eighteenth meeting. We don't discuss that any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay. So that passes, it is tabled until the June eighteenth meeting. Feel free to email anybody on council, again, the neighbors, feel free to contact us now. Now we've got two weeks for them to do some work on this. Make sure you contact your council and let us know if we need to do a little, I guess I don't know what it would be, I mean, if you have new things that you come up with since the planning commission, make sure we know about that, and...
Yeah, and I would just also say, I mean, it is often feasibly impossible for us to hear from everybody in the neighborhood, but I'm going to be here tonight after this meeting, and that, we've still got other matters on the agenda, but I'm willing to stick around.
And we have an H R A meeting immediately following this.
We do, but it's a short one.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, council, did you...
Yeah, Mr. Allstrom.
Did you decide if there was a work session next week, or...
So, we're going to look at, yeah, so you're going to work with Mr. Stemwaddle on that, and if we do it, we'll do it before the meeting on the eighteenth.
Mayor, council, on that point, you know, we can make that decision as late as a week from Friday, because that's when our council agenda packet goes out, and so if in the meet, if we have discussions and the developer decides that that's not needed for whatever reason, then we obviously wouldn't need to have that, but by next Friday, we'll have to make a decision if that meeting's going to be held or not, and it sounds like there's some availability interest to have that much earlier so that we provide enough time for that. So if that becomes an issue, please let me know.
So now, did we just, we just tabled all three and we're going to, no, we tabled one... Um, so now, did we just, we just tabled all three and we're gonna, no, we tabled one?
Yep. I would suggest now with the public hearing matter, which is, I think we could, are we on, I'm sorry, I think we're looking at the preliminary plat, item thirteen, I would just suggest, uh, tabling that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would move to table Planning Case nineteen dash four, um, the preliminary plat resolution nineteen fifty-seven grading, granting final plat to our June eighteenth meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, and I have just lost track, item thirteen, right? PC, Planning Case nineteen dash four. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second to table that to the June eighteenth meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, and that motion carries, one, uh, one opposed, Councilmember Griszkowiak, same with that last one. Um, and then, item thirteen A, which is item seven tonight, it's been moved to thirteen A, Consider Resolution nineteen dash fifty-eight, Real Estate Equities Housing Revenue Bonds, um, and you said that's a public hearing, or the...
Yes.
I'm sorry, my iPad has died completely.
Your Honor, I would suggest that we open that public hearing and continue that until our June eighteenth date.
Okay. All right, so we wanna do that? So we're making a motion to table that, right?
No, we gotta open the public hearing.
Oh, we gotta open the public?
Bang the gavel.
Bang the gavel. We're opening the public hearing on the Real Estate Equities Housing Revenue Bonds, and this opens a public hearing for a very specific reason, and that is simply, um, uh, we'll consider the site plan... Um, earlier this year, the council, um, what are, what are we actually doing here? Real Estate Equities is requested the city act as the issuer for tax-exempt bonds in an amount not to exceed thirty million dollars to fund the project. The bonds, which are not an obligation of the city, will provide construction financing for the project, and will be paid down after the project has stabilized and permanent financing is, is obtained. Um, consistent with the term sheet the council adopted earlier this year, this authorization represents an initial temporary bond issue, um, so we're gonna open that public hearing, I actually opened a public hearing. Mr. Stemwaddle, thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Brody, but since, uh, from an order of sequencing standpoint, since we just talked about continuing this hearing until the next meeting after the other decisions are made, I think, um, by direction of the mayor or the council, how does that...
I think we just make a motion to, um, to continue this matter and keep the hearing open until our June eighteenth meeting.
Rather than take testimony tonight.
Okay.
Yep, so I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing until our next meeting and to keep the record open. Second.
Okay. Um, can we get some guidance, of course, but, yeah, nevermind. I was trying, I was trying to figure what, what, who, who would testify at a, at a public hearing for a bond like this? Because I don't know that we've ever had anybody do that, what would they actually have to talk about, whether we should be the person or not, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the idea.
That's the idea.
I, I think it's a stat, it's a statutory requirement is why we do it, it's one of the, uh, one of the obligations that you have to take care of in order to issue these conduit revenue bonds.
I guess I'm just kinda curious what the curbs are as far as, uh, how, how do you direct the conver, the, the public hearing to reflect the actual topic then? I guess between now and then, we'll want the curbs to keep them in between.
Sure, and that's why we would have this item last, is because we wanna, like I said, this is relationship to issuing those bonds, not to the project itself, and...
Right, 'cause it's not related to the project, right?
It's not, not to the project approval or the conditions for approving the project.
Okay. Did we vote on that?
We did not.
No, you did not.
Okay, did we have a motion? Do we have anything?
We do.
Motion in a second, okay. Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
So, these no obligation bonds happen all the time, the city owes no money, the city has to be one of the people that sign, but it's not us that's paying the money, so...
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries, and the public hearing is continued until the June eighteenth meeting. Um, okay, we're at item fourteen, Consider Resolution number nineteen dash twelve sub eight, Approving Plans and Specs for Port Riverwalk Grading and Authorized Solicitation of Bids. Mr. Hammer, somebody?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, this is just a continuation of some work session discussion from earlier, uh, in an effort to potentially expedite, um, the Port Riverwalk Construction Project, um, city staff would propose to go out and solicit bids for the grading of the Port Riverwalk site, uh, and that, that would be, um, contingent on future agreements with Center Homes and, and, uh, cost considerations, so, um, we will, uh, open that for a public bid, or we would put that out for a public bid beginning next week, and solicit those bids, and continue kind of the conversation of the development scenario, uh, going forward with that schedule, so I can answer any questions you have on that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gaisler?
I would just like to, you know, thank Center Homes and city staff for looking at creative ways to keep this moving along and, you know, being able to, you know, work together in a partnership and good faith, um, and so with that, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash two sub eight, Approving Plans and Specifications, and ordering advertisement of bids for the proposed grading to serve Port Riverwalk Housing redevelopment.
Second.
So, a motion by Gaisler and a second by Kicker, and the clarification, that was Resolution number nineteen dash twelve sub eight, correct?
Oh, did I, yeah.
Okay.
Did I get late?
Was that, was it Griszkowiak, second? Okay, all right.
Jinx, I'll take that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Discussion?
Two or something?
Yeah, yeah, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item fifteen, uh, Consider Revocation of Therapeutic Massage Enterprise License for Ming Massage, one-one-two-eight-four Robinson Drive. Um, Ms. Lenzmeyer, you wanna hit the highlights, or...
I do, thank you. Mayor and council before you tonight is a recommendation to revoke the enterprise license for Ming massage based on the outlined code violations and some operational concerns at the business. Ms. G and her attorney are here to speak to council about the matter.
Okay. Council, would you like any more direction from staff before we listen to the defendant, uh, felon, what do you wanna, uh, felon, is that what they...
Licensee.
Licensee, thank you. Okay, no? All right, yes, sir. Just identify yourself.
Mayor and council members, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity today to present our side of the story.
I'm sorry for keeping you so late.
It, I like to watch it. Maybe it's not so good on your side.
You've got that right.
We, we do it often in the courtroom, but it's not that, like, we have people, the sheriff would just get people out if they act that way, but, um, my name is Don Joe, I'm the attorney, I'm representing the Ming massage, uh, in this appeal, and, and again, I, I would like to thank the council and, and the mayor for allowing us the opportunity to present our story, I hope that you can, uh, your mind can be open and, until we present our story to, uh, to make a decision. The Ming massage has been in business for over a year, this is the time that they renew their licenses, and, uh, in this year, in, in this one year of operation, um, I'd like to approach the mayor and council, it has, it gradually built up its customer basis that has very good, uh, opinions on the, uh, Groupon's, may I approach, and just, uh, maybe some... Very good opinions about their deep tissue massage, relaxing, and, uh, so they have a very good customer basis, and, uh, there, there has been no citations of violations or irregular practices. I just want to go directly to what happened, uh, at this inspection that discovered the irregularities or the non-compliance with the code, and the report mentioned, uh, the violation of the safety and health code. Um, I mean, I just want to also again approach mayors and city councils with the picture of the massage business, thank you. Uh, in this business, there are four rooms, room one, two, three, four marked on the, on the picture, and room number one is used for double beds, in cases where if husband wife comes into, or two persons come into the building, so come into the massage, it's a, it's, it can accommodate two persons at the same time. Room number two, where the report noted that there's, it appeared, might appear that there was a living in it, room number two was used as a, a, a employee or owner resting place. The, the business starts from ten o'clock and nine o'clock closed, one person normally, so when she's get tired, she has a place to rest, that's not a, a massage room. Uh, room number three and four is noted up there, you will notice there's a mattress on the floor, they do what they call the Thai-style massage. Thai-style massage is, is practiced on a hard board basis, and that's where the, uh, notific, the, the, the report noticed that there's violation of the code, and, but, following the, the inspection, the massage owner has remedied the situation, what you're seeing there is the new one that they have, uh, 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 remedied the situation. We admit, I talked to, uh, the business owner, she admitted that, that, you know, the, the, what the inspector find was true, but they have remedied the situation, and also, there might be a misunderstanding of the things on the, on the floor, because that's the style of massage they're, 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 uh, performing, and, uh, and also, but I just wanted to, uh, point that, the council members, the mayor members, to the city code, where, uh, you know, the, one of the city code five-two-nine-one, uh, one-three sanitation and health, it says, clean linens must be provided to cover table and chair, and I, I want to point to the report, in the report, there's nowhere to say, uh, the definition of the clean according to the code is that there's a dirt, there's some kind of, uh, extra materials in there, but the report doesn't say anything, so, uh, I don't know if, so it's not clean, it's, it's not unclean, it's, uh, according to the code, and I just want to say it to the council members, uh, mayors, that the, the business does wash their towers after every use, they are using, uh, they're, they're washing it all the time, and as a matter of fact, on that day, the temp worker in that business as, was actually out shopping, buying the detergent for the store. So those are the health and sanitation violations that, that's, well, first of all, uh, we admit there, there could be, there, there could be non-compliance with it, but we have remedied it, so we, later on, what I'm saying is that, if the council and, uh, mayors find that we're not in compliance, we would ask, uh, the city to, m- maybe not adopting the draconian method of shutting it down, maybe you can order us shut down and, you know, remedy it for a month or a probational period, doing additional inspections, we're willing to pay for the additional fees, uh, that, that, if that's necessary, I just, please don't, uh, just shut us down, and for a new business, it's, it's, it's been in, in, in place for one year, and, uh, and with no citations violations. Now, I'm gonna, uh...
Mr. Joe, can I just get a clarification?
Yes.
When did the business start then?
Eight, twenty eighteen, January twenty eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's not correct.
No.
She took over the operation and was, issued the license with the business change from Angels, it was operating as Angels Massage, so if you were operating before January, then you were in violation of code, because you were not licensed until January of nineteen.
You是什么时候开始开的? 这个生意是什么时候开始开的?
月，等于说是今年的1月份开始开的.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke, I, the, the store started December twenty eighteen.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out, 'cause that, that over one year, I was kind of wondering, it didn't match up with the timeline that I've got here.
But there, there might be a massage store in there for a year in the past, right? Correct?
Mr. Mayor? That is correct, there is another operator.
Okay.
And the business name was Angels Massage at that point in time.
Okay, okay, then that's right. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, talking about the operational, uh, irregularities, like the, the display of massage licenses on the wall, and the, what happened was that Ms. G was the owner of the business, on December eighteenth, she got a phone call from Los Angeles that one of her friend was seriously sick, and I believe the, the plane ticket that we handed earlier was in the part of the packet, correct? The plane ticket, she, the owner of the plane, uh, the massage owner booked the plane ticket from here to Los Angeles, seven days, and she didn't want to shut down the business, so she asked a temp worker, which is the Ms. Z-H-A-N-G, which is mentioned in the store, who has a valid license to work in the store, to man the store while she was gone, and, uh, so, there was displaying on the wall her valid license, Ms. G's, the owner's license, there was displaying a valid massage license on the wall, and, but the temp worker, uh, li- license was not displaying on the wall, and, uh, while the temp worker was in the store, there was a lady, the report mentioned, Ms. Hong, she actually was the person who wanted to buy the store, just check it out and see, to see how the business was going, want to buy the store, so there was a report, as you can see, uh, there was a customer in the waiting room, room number two, that's not even the room for doing massage, was in the waiting room while, uh, the inspection came, and so then she called, uh, the temp worker, the temp worker came back and explained, as, as, the temp worker did show that she has a valid massage license, uh, in there, so that, hopefully that can explain what is going on there. Was there a technical violation, yes, we will admit the temp worker should put it on the wall, but it was just such a short-term arrangement, uh, that, that's a, a technical violation, so, um, that's what happened for that inspection, so based on what we have here, and I also have a, a letter from, uh, the landlord, which actually operate the convenience store right in that corner, you know, with the, uh, gas station, the, the person who operates the convenience store is the landlord, I have this landlord letter to say, uh, the business owner actually has been, you know, all the time just to see her in the store, and she, there was, uh, when the store closes, she say the guy is gone, uh, the car is gone, there's no living in the area, and, in the, in the premises, and she does have, I have more evidence here, she doesn't live on the premises, those are the, uh, the resting areas. So based on this, uh, mayors and council members, uh, I'm asking, yes, there is a non-compliance with the code, and, uh, but there was an explanation, and based on, this is a new businesses, we would ask, uh, the mayor and council members to, to, uh, not to deny the renew of the businesses, because there's a lot of investment putting into, um, the businesses, and based on the violations, there's no illicit activities, you know, as we know, when we talk about massage parlors, you're, you're thinking about those sex traffickers or what, uh, and there was nothing going on here, was the, the health and sanitation violations, which I believe, uh, and most city councils would allow people to, you can shut it down to get them to remedy the situation, it's allow them to, uh, open up instead of just to say, well, that's it, uh, you violated, it's one shot, you're gone. So we would ask the, uh, the mayors and city councils to consider that, maybe allow my client, uh, you can either to shut it down for months or two, to get them to make sure, and things are up to the code, and, uh, and allow her to continue this business.
Mr. Joe, I've just got a couple questions.
Yes.
So, um, you talked about just one thing, but this really, in February, in February, it was brought to their attention that the website was advertising from nine AM till eleven PM, and code is they couldn't be open after ten, and it's still being advertised as being open till eleven PM.
At this time?
Yes.
你，你指的是10点到9点那个？
This week.
As of Friday.
As of Friday.
You, you are, this, this is what happens most times with the Chinese massage stores. So she doesn't, she speak very little English. What, 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 what happens is that they parcel out the job to people who is doing, you know, advertisement, for instance. They just say, well, open advertisement without their understanding what is on the advertisement. I see a lot of cases where the advertisement was, you know, skinny clad girls there to say, oh, we have new girls up there. But most times, those jobs are for, they're just passed out for the people and until they notice that there's a problem, sometimes they have friends, American friends, for instance, they notice, oh, you do that, they would just call to get them to take it out, take it down.
I wasn't even up to that one yet. That was coming later.
Oh, okay.
So, so in, in February, we asked them to change the hours that they've got on the website and, and they're still on their, as of Friday, that they're open till 11:00 p.m. And then there was an issue that, you know, that they, she had a therapist that wouldn't leave, so she called the police to ask them to escort them off the business, off the premises. Four days later, they were, the police were called because the building had been left unlocked and somebody had wandered in thinking it was open and got locked inside because the handle was broken to get out. And then later again in the same month, it was, they found it advertised on an adult website. And I believe it's, and it's still, and it's still advertised on the, it was brought to their attention in March and it's still being advertised on the adult, for additional adult services offered by the business. And then we finally get up to the May 22nd, which was the compliance inspection that I think that you're really discussing tonight and not discussing all those other things that haven't been dealt with yet.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember, I, actually, I was only show those documents. I was not showing any of the other documents, the violations and the time and hours. I, I think it, it's understandable, but I don't, I don't have those documents to say I come here to argue, to argue for her based on the inspections. But based on my talking with her, she did mention the police incident. You know, there was one massage owner there, she doesn't want to go, she doesn't want to hire her, you know, she doesn't want to go, that's why she called the police. Hours and the adult side commercials, I just briefly just talked to her, she said she never received any letters. I don't know where that was researched.
没有看到，我当时...
Yeah, so, so it's kind of like, she, she, she said she didn't really receive the letter. I didn't receive any, the package of the materials that's going to talk about today. I, the only thing I got was this for the inspection on the May 22nd.
Mayor and Council, she was hand-delivered a letter. I handed her the letter that indicated everything and had copies of everything.
她说她亲自交给你的。
I, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't answered. She, she doesn't receive it.
And if you would have even, if you would have looked at our packet for tonight, you would see all the other information in there too.
Yeah, I, I came here a little bit earlier, but I, I was only giving the May 22nd letters and that's what, and I was told that the, the plane ticket and also the explanation was handed in before.
It was.
I was hired at last minute.
Yeah, we've got her explanation.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Council, any questions for the licensee or her attorney? Hearing none. So I think we're going to reserve the conversation to the council then. If we have any questions, you'll be right there and...
I, I don't have any.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
After reviewing all of the materials in the agenda and having an opportunity to hear from the business owner, I'm going to move revocation of the therapeutic massage enterprise license issued to Ming Massage effective immediately based on the five, no, six findings that are listed in the agenda. Violation of city code 5-2904, parenz two. Violation of city code 5-2912, parenz one. Violation of city code 12-401, the fire code and the state fire code for residential occupancy in a commercial building. Violation of city code 5-21, 2913, parenz five. And violation of city code section 5-2913, parenz six. And also the additional factor of the city's discovery of advertising on adult content websites, which are known sites for those who solicit prostitution. That's my motion.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kaiser?
Um, there are some things that I could be sympathetic to, right? Okay, did I not quite understand a viol, you know, a city code section? And, you know, I would be all for saying, okay, let's give you time and, and take a look at that, right? But there are some here that are just basic, that you need to have your licenses out and you need to only employ people who are licensed. That to me is a baseline. If it was just that, well, wait a minute, well, we have a, a resting room, I could maybe, if it was just that one, or how the linens were stored, I would give a second shot at that. But when it's that fundamental, you gotta have people who are licensed work there, that's where I would support the motion.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Look, the purpose of the city codes that apply in these circumstances and the licensing requirements and the fire code and the state fire code is to protect public safety, to protect the consumers who go to a commercial enterprise. It is clear to me, based on the evidence that is provided in the packet and the explanation that's provided, but there was, there were multiple pieces of evidence that were provided, which, which I accept, that the public was at risk while this business was in operation. And for that reason, I'm recommending, and I made the motion to recommend, a revocation of therapeutic massage enterprise license for this business. We have an obligation to protect public safety as a city council member and when information like this comes to us and it's clear that it hasn't been redressed, notwithstanding the repeated contacts with the city over time, to address these issues and concerns that were obviously being raised. It's a grave concern to me and I, I think to the rest of the people on the council. If at some point in time in the future, this business owner comes back to the city and says, here's my corrective action plan and here's how I'm going to change and here are the assurances that I can give to the city, then I'd like to reapply for a license. I would hope that city staff would accept that application and take it seriously and process it through the ordinary course of business, but I think you know where I'm at.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
So, did we lose control of the thermostat or is it? It's really hot in here.
It's seriously cold.
Remember we spent the money on the HVAC so we could control it in here?
One more, can you get through that?
All right. All right, item 16.
No, no, I was sucking down water so bad, I had to go to the restroom and I abandoned one of the agenda.
I thought it was, I thought it was the stress of that one agenda item and I thought, boy, I'm heating up here. All right, let's get control here. Item 16, if I can find it, is to consider resolution of support for capital bonding request for a pedestrian bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard in Port Riverwalk. Mr. Fornilius, do you want to?
Sure, I know it's, I know it's late, Mr. Mayor and...
And we're hot, don't forget that.
And you're hot, yeah, and I'm sweating here too. So real briefly, this, this, the, this pedestrian bridge has been discussed previously as part of the Port Riverwalk development and the reconstruction of Coon Rapids Boulevard. We've had discussions about that. This particular bridge would connect the Coon Creek Regional Trail and it could really be a separate independent project from the reconstruction of Coon Rapids Boulevard. So I think the original thought was if Coon Rapids Boulevard were reconstructed, let's say in the next year or so, we could come in at a later date and construct the pedestrian bridge. We did apply for funds for this last year as part of the regional solicitation through the Met Council, which is applying for federal transportation dollars. We were unsuccessful. We estimate right now that the cost of the project is about four and a half million dollars. And we were contacted recently by our, members of our legislative delegation about submitting a request through the capital bonding program. So this would be state bonding money that we would apply for. We would be competing with state agencies, other municipalities around the state for bonding money that the state would issue. They're very prescriptive standards in terms of what you can use money for. We think this project meets some of those standards, but obviously there are a lot of needs statewide. So what we are, what we're asking for council to do this evening is to adopt a resolution of support. It's really the first step in the process. We would have to submit additional information coming up on June 14th and then there's a process over the summer where this project would be vetted by the legislature, eventually by the governor's office. If it's included, we would probably be a part of some kind of a tour. And then ultimately, at the end of the year, before the state legislature would convene, the governor would then make recommendations. So, you know, whether or not this would be funded, we don't know, but I think what we're trying to do is pursue whatever funding opportunities there are, and that's really the spirit and intent of, of this particular proposal tonight. I will say that the way that state bonding works is that the state would pay for no more than 50% of the cost of the project. So the city and/or another partner we would have to find would have to contribute the rest of the funds. So potentially, we would be on the, on the hook for a little over 2.2 million dollars. We do have some pooled TIF that we could use for this kind of a public improvement. So there, there would be that as a, as a potential resource for, for a local match. So again, it's a pledge of support. I think if we were fortunate enough to be selected, there would be decisions that we would make at a later date, whether or not it, it's sufficient funding for us to proceed, whether or not we have additional dollars for a match. But again, it's really the first step in the process and, and that's what we would recommend you consider this evening.
One of the key lines here is the resolution does make a pledge of local financial support for the project. So I'm understanding that to say, if we got the money from the state, we would have to do something.
In order to, Councilmember Denver, yes. I mean, in order to, to utilize the funds, we would have to, we would have to pledge...
So if they approved it, we could say no to getting the money.
Right, that's correct.
That was the part I wasn't sure on because the way it was worded, it made it sound like if they approved it, we had to take it and spend the money. So that, that helps a lot. So if we get it, great, then we can, we can choose to spend it or not get the money. So this is kind of a no harm, no foul voting for it.
That was not very confident. Go ahead, Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor, Council, I, I think that's correct. I think in, in my mind, I, the way this would proceed is if, if there was interest at a state legislature level in touring this site, if we thought in fact that there, there was a real possibility that these dollars would be considered, I think we'd want to have some serious conversations before the funds are awarded to say, rather than get them approved and then say, no, thank you, that we have confidence by the end of this year, assuming we feel like we've got a funding partner that's a possibility, that we're confident too of where our funding mechanisms are going to come from. And so I think this would really just sort of preserve the right for us to put our hand up to say that we're interested in money. Otherwise, we'd have another two years on this type of funding to make that attempt and get that process started. And then over that course of time, between now and the end of the year, we could have additional discussions about what that means. But really, we'd be looking more toward that end of summer, fall timeline to get on the bonding tour. So it doesn't obligate us if at any point we say we want to withdraw our application or for some reason, two years from now, you know, let's just say this has never happened, construction costs go double and, you know, the, we don't, it wasn't 2.5 million or 2.25 million, now it's, you know, three and a half million for a city contribution, you know, we could say no at that time and they just wouldn't match the money, obviously.
Okay, so...
Councilmember Denver?
I would move to adopt resolution number 19-60, which supports capital bonding requests in the Minnesota Legislature for a pedestrian bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard in Port Riverwalk to, for the safety of the trail.
So a motion by Denver and a second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Kreskowiac?
I just got the email last week, I think it was Friday, it might even have been over the weekend, from our legislative delegation about this, that we need to get these bond requests in, or these bonding requests in. And I think it needs to be in by the 18th, is that correct?
June 14th.
Correct. June 14th.
Yep.
My question is, do we have enough time to go all in on this? I mean, if we're going to make this request, we should make it as robust and as appealing as possible, right? So are we going to have staff time dedicated to making a good pitch or how do, and how are we going to do that?
Well, I, I'll go ahead, Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor, Council, I believe we can, at least in this initial application process, it's really looking for sufficient information for them to understand the project, the scope, the impact, to gauge the, the interest of the legislature and the bonding committees. Really where you're making the pitch, it would be more on the tour side of it to show what is the need, what is the, what is the issue, much like we did with the Hanson Boulevard grade separation project. We kind of brought out the bells and whistles to sell that project to the state legislators that were...
That's usually the summer.
A part of the tour, correct. In terms of the time for this application, we have the benefit in some respects that we made a similar but different funding application for regional solicitation past, this past winter. And so a lot of that information used in that application, we can, I wouldn't say it's a copy and paste, but there's a lot of crossover information that was developed at that time. And so, you know, we'll have the benefit of these 10 days to fill out that form and take that next step.
All right. So just a form, it's not, I mean, our application doesn't have to, we don't have a lot of staff time into putting together the application, so.
Okay.
Well, and we've already got most of the stuff from the last one to the Met Council.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. And I, and I, and I like the clarification that this doesn't obligate us because the first application, we were willing to contribute only 20%. $900,000 for a bridge that really has a more regional value the way it's laid out, I, I thought made sense. But two and a half million or whatever it is now, for a regional value trail, I'm, I'm not real fond of. But if we can get a partner from the county or if we can reline it a little bit to make it more so that it actually works for the neighborhood or something, you know, something to consider. Mr. Councilmember Denver?
And also that we could find other creative sources to fund it. I mean, I don't know, maybe if you add something to it, it becomes art and then it goes to the legacy amendment. Maybe you can find some fancy donor who loves bridges that are a certain style and make it that way. But yeah, two, two and a half million dollars is a lot of money, so get out your creative hats and try to find more sources would be my, my hope.
Well, and with enough timing, you know, Anoka County would be the obvious partner on this.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Did we vote? We haven't voted yet.
No.
All, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And we are at the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Are you here for open mic?
I think so.
Now's your time. Come on up. And open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies or practices. You will have three minutes and just give us your name and address and let me reset that and, okay, good.
Hi, I'm Bernard Schatz, live at 11817 Rent Street. I was here for the last council meeting. Thanks for your time and patience and the work that you've done so far.
So far.
And the work didn't stop, it continued. I got response, but I'm not quite sure I got the right one. One, I got a telephone call. Two, I got a letter in the mail. Three, I got one hand-delivered right to my door when I wasn't home. So I thought, well, my God, it must be election time for somebody here. Somebody really wants a job. So anyhow, put that aside. Yes, I appreciate the work that was done and so forth, but in the letter, it doesn't say any recommendation or... But in the letter, it doesn't say any recommendation or nothing that it did for me. Just explained all your rules, how you happen to come up with this program, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm still looking for a better answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think part of, part of that answer is we are looking at it. You know, they gave you what the ordinance is, they gave you the policy. And that's something that we had a good conversation about at the last council meeting or when we discussed your, your answer. And we're hoping to give you a better answer yet. I'm not sure if they'll hand deliver it or not, but.
I appreciate that. If you need problems looking at it, I got some extra glasses.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm probably wasting my time to ask if there's anybody else for open mics since you are the last one here. We do not have any reports on previous open mics. And we are to other business.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll do the events, right? Right, so Thursday, June 6th, starts our summer concert series at the dam, The Mooners, which is classic rock. So that's coming out. Sunday, the 9th, is Schools Outskate at the Ice Arena. The splash pad has been opened, so it was over there last weekend. And we have started our, Arts Commission has their photo contest that is out and about. And next week, Tuesday, come visit us at Parkside.
Parkside Park, which is.
Parkside Park, which is right off of 99th.
It's by Wade's House.
It's by Wade's House.
99th and Norway.
99th and Norway. Yeah. And with that, Summer in the City, that's where you're going to see city staff and you're going to see council. And we're going to do a short presentation, but you get to hear and provide feedback. So lots of things coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Councilmember Denver.
So come to the end of the school year, congratulations to all the students and teachers and parents. Everyone drive just a little more carefully because there's going to be a lot more kids out running around. And I think there's some sort of summer program going on at some of the parks that the city's putting on?
Rec on the Go's, what is it, Regan Spot? Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the council. That starts, it's going to run June, July, and August, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Forgive me, but I don't have all the times for all of the parks.
Everything was in the newsletter that was mailed every single house in the city.
CTN has run something on it. But yes, it's roughly 10 until 2, 3 o'clock in the afternoon at select locations throughout the city.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
So a couple of things. First of all, the newsletter looked fantastic. I mean, I, I received it, I looked through it, I actually sat down with it and read it. I, I enjoyed getting it and my kudos to everybody on staff who worked at putting that together and made contributions to it. I thought that was a nice thing to do for the community. I would also be remiss if I didn't bring something up. And it's, it's a little bit of sad news and forgive me if I'm jumping ahead of other people. But today was a very difficult day for many of us. We lost a wonderful person in the community, Judge Tammy Frederickson. Dave Brody's predecessor, one of his predecessors in the job of Coon Rapids City Attorney, passed away after a significant struggle with an illness that she had. I met her over 20 years ago and practiced alongside her as a, as a line prosecutor when she was a line prosecutor for the city of Coon Rapids. And if I could characterize Tammy Frederickson, her honor, in one way, I would say she was just really classy. And she was a wonderful contributor to the city, a wonderful community member, a thoughtful individual and somebody who really cared about the citizens of not just Coon Rapids, but Anoka County. And I know other people have thoughts and memories of working with her. And I'm, I'm sorry for your loss. And my condolences go out to her whole family and the rest of her friends in the community. It's significant to me on this day, when I learned the news, because I learned the news at a funeral for one of my good friends, who was a prosecutor and a defense attorney. But more than that, he was a father and a husband and a brother. And his name was Dan Homestead. And he worked in the Hennepin County Attorney's Office with me. He was a good lawyer. Some might say he was a very skilled lawyer. But beyond that, he was a really good person. And he took his own life. And so I want to use this as an opportunity to say to people in the community, do not forget that there are others in the community that care about you. If you are going through something and you need to talk to someone, pick up the phone and call 911. There's always somebody there to talk to you and they will route the right services to you. And never forget that everybody here on the council and everybody in the Coon Rapids city staff cares about you as well. So it's a difficult day for us, but we have wonderful memories of both of these individuals and here in Coon Rapids in particular, Tammy Frederickson.
Okay. Yeah, Tammy's, it was a real loss. Boy, she just had such great community spirit. And it's like, Tammy, there's new council members being signed in and sworn in, I'll be there. She'd be here with her robe and, boy, she would handle it. And she always was interested in what's going on around the community and just, yeah, just a real spirit. Yep. All right, any other business? Can we do something about the, it feels cooler now. Is it, is it actually working?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned.